That's our goal. Okay, let me see, what do we have next here? So next is Commission on Disabilities?
Oh, no.
I'm sorry, watch out.
Sorry, no, no, I jumped. Commission on Disability, I went to Historical, sorry.
So it's number 549, Megan, Athena, welcome. How are you tonight?
Great. Thank you so much for having us here. I've been on the commission for awhile, but this is my first time ever addressing the board. So thank you for the opportunity to speak about what we've been working on this last year and what we hope to accomplish coming up.
Sounds great.
We, for the first time, held an information forum about disability awareness, resources that are available in the community to connect residents with those service providers. It was a wonderful, wonderful event. They even were giving out flu shots, which was great. And that was down at the community center. So it was a beautiful location, really well attended. We had over twenty representatives from agencies there. And so we'd like to do that again this year. We have a date, November 3rd.
November 3rd.
At the community center. At the community center again.
And most people from the town all of the ages we've been representing there. Were there, were represented. And so everyone was talking to each other and got to see what everyone actually does and who communicates. And the school was there, the Course Foundation, so, and we had, it was called Situate Accessibility Awareness Fund. And we had people, people that had disabled children and young adults came to see what was out there. So they learned about adapted programs that, for example, Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation, that they do, they have adaptive skiing, adaptive milling. And they were able to talk with the parents, were able to talk with these people. And we were able to introduce those people to the people that work for Situate that do similar things. So it was a great event. And we'll do it again next year.
And we had high school students there volunteering, which is really nice, to get everybody together. So yeah, we plan to do that again this year. We also worked with the Massachusetts Office on Disability with their Call for Arts Program, which they had a specific, the theme was breaking barriers. And so the commission funded local artists, and that artwork was on display at the State House.
Well, it sounds like you're taking on and doing a lot of unique initiatives to increase the awareness of everything. So I don't think either of those two things had ever happened before.
No, these were new, this is new.
So thank you. It's nice to have that freshness.
Yeah. So in addition to that, we also are able to provide any technical assistance to the town may need or different agencies may need as far as ADA compliance when asked.
The other thing we did is we helped to draft for Chief Murphy and the first responders the functional needs assessment, is this the way it's, functional needs assessment form that Chief Murphy wanted to have all residents fill out for prior to storms like this, so that they, that the first responders would know what they're getting into when they get a call for assistance. And we rolled it out on November 4th, after working with Council, Chief Murphy, and we rolled that out. So that was, we presented that on November, at the Accessibility Awareness Event. So that was a, and Chief Murphy came and talked to people about it. So that was, that's a great situation.
Yep.
Okay. I think you guys are doing great work. So, thank you. Just bringing some new ideas to the Commission on Disabilities and really raising awareness and being a good partner. I know, John, so what do you leave, I just want to know if you want to start?
I was just gonna say, you know, Megan and Athena, Michelle Murphy, Jeff Dugan, you guys are refreshing, you know, and doing a great job. And I know that, just the three things you're doing, it's like something the commission has not done, and I know that we're in the process of sending out an RFP, we gotta work on that for assessment, town-wide issues. We passed it at the last town meeting, we'll be working on that. But I say, great job, keep it up, you know? Well done.
Tony?
No, just did them. I think you guys do great work. I think there's a huge need for it, and you know, you guys, please watch this again with the resources you have. The budget is, it's kind of mandatory, so it's not a big financial need, and the work we get for it is outstanding.
Yeah. The budget's $5,000.
For the public, yeah, it's $5,000.
That's what it is.
A year, not a lot. But...
Use it.
Shaun?
Oh, thank you as well, I appreciate it, yes.
Karen? Yeah, I did it in the first event, and it was, it was really, A, it was really well-run, but the cross-fertilization that you mentioned was really exciting to kind of see people say, hey, I didn't know you did that, and oh, that was really cool. And I got my flu shot. Thanks for that.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming in tonight and presenting it, and for all the hard work that you all do. Stay with it.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next is Historical, 691. Good evening.
Good evening. Bob Chesky, I'm Vice President of the Historical, and Dave is at Cedar Point, where he had his hip operated on, so I got a call today to come up, so. And Jim, I want to welcome him to town.
Thank you for stepping in.
Been a tough two months. We own thirteen, well, we maintain thirteen properties, seven of them which are from the town of Situate, we maintain for them. We either got them through a vote at town meeting or a stipulation when the town got a hold of them. And we foresee that we will probably spend close to $18,000, electricity, natural gas, telephone alarm systems, maintenance of the buildings, and oversight services. That was our request. Other than, I'm gonna keep it short. You guys want to go home?
What, Bob?
I said I'm gonna keep it short, I think you want to go home.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I appreciate that.
Either that or I can call Dave on the phone here.
So you requested eighteen, last year the budget was $13,744, and Nancy, the town administrator, approved $15,894. I'm curious where, where the delta is. Do we, do you know where you sort of pulled that out at all?
We did provide an increase in repair and maintenance, but not as much as was requested.
Okay.
It was a 24 percent request. We said, we decided, now we didn't, because we recognize that there are repairs that are ongoing at these sites.
Okay. Well, it's pretty significant, too, taking it from $9,500 up to $13,000, so.
Yeah, we foresee major repairs at the Cudworth House and Lawson Tower, also the Lawson Gates, when they were, they have been repaired, and they're waiting to be installed, but there was damage that wasn't related to the accident, we have to pay for. So there are some legitimate expenses. That's what we're asking for.
Yep, absolutely. Questions?
No, I'm fine with it.
Karen?
No. You guys do a great job with the services that you provide, and...
Come visit us anytime.
Any damage from the storm to any of the structures? Have you been able to get out?
Well, the lighthouse, yes. And there's, there'll be, I'm not sure what it's gonna cost, but we put in a boardwalk there, and as you can see, the stones are, they're gone. So we'll have to get, it'll be a lot of work to do that, but we usually do that on a volunteer basis. Bob Gallagher's pretty good at moving stones, which he's done quite a lot. So, other than that, that's the, we had a little damage to some of our buildings, which are the old Oak and Bucket House and the Little Red Schoolhouse, but that's not, that's our problem, that's not yours.
So, okay, hopefully it wasn't extensive.
No.
What's the data on the original building of Old Oak and Bucket, Bob?
That is a good question. I might have it here in my files.
Don't worry about it, I was just curious, don't mean that.
I can tell you about the G A R, that was 1825.
The original proportion, that's what I was, sixteen something, isn't it?
Let's see.
Jim, can I just, while he's looking for that, ask, is Lighthouse Road and Rebecca Roads open? I, no business out there, so I didn't go out there, alright.
You could get through today, it was...
Oh, yeah, just hadn't seen it.
But it's open, and...
It's not the greatest, I drove it tonight.
Yeah, it's not, I mean, it's not great.
Yeah, I wouldn't drive through, it's a big puddle.
No, I just, yeah, didn't have any reason about this, so I wasn't going to.
I walked down to see Dave, and I wouldn't drive down.
Okay. Did you go the right way or did you go the wrong way?
I went both ways, I made the loop. Gotta check it out, you're a townie, have to look.
I drove through this morning, Shaun, and you couldn't go around to the lighthouse, you had to go through the parking lot.
Okay.
It was clear around the end, but...
But Rebecca and Lighthouse are passable.
Get out there, it was, wasn't great, but you can in and out.
Okay. Wes Topman was working on it this afternoon, he was doing a lot of, him and Jeff, what's his name, Jeff the Mason there, the guy who did the streetlights, but, not the real...
I don't hear you talking.
Murtry. Murtry?
Mootree.
Mootree, that's it.
Well, Bob, thank you, and give Dave our best.
I will.
I'm glad to hear he evacuated at least, for once.
He's in good spirits. He's got the dog to keep him company.
All right, well, give him our best, and thank you for stepping in.
Thank you.
Okay, Bob, thanks. Maura, Recreation, 630.
Good evening.
Good evening, folks.
How's everyone tonight?
Good.
Very good, thank you. Great to see you.
Always good to see you.
So you want to just give us a little bit of a, thank you, overview on...
Overview of the year?
Sure.
So, yeah, first and foremost, we'd like to thank everyone involved for getting us into the old Gates Building. Our offices are currently there, and we are programming up in the gymnasium, so, yeah.
Yeah, the gymnasium's been book solid since like October. All our youth groups are using it. Actually, the school has come back in and used it a couple times. We have programming going, if you ride by it every night, it's always got the lights on, except for this week. We had a little outage this week, so, which, it ended up being pretty good because we were at a conference, so we didn't miss a beat. We were down in Falmouth at the Seacrest, we just came up today, going back down tomorrow, we're still in the middle of the conference, so, so it worked out good in that way, so we kept on working.
I think it's still, oh, right?
At four o'clock, it was still...
Library was open at five o'clock, and she's been on the same circuit. She should be back, if not, they're working on it.
Okay, great.
They were in that area. And just, if you have the opportunity, you need to go see Maura's office, because when they pulled up the carpet, the floor under it was the same wood floor as the gym.
Yes.
Oh, man.
Had it refinished, and it's absolutely gorgeous. I might go take it one of these days and put it in my office, because it's really nice.
Yeah, I was surprised, it was a really ugly, dirty carpet that was there, and we pulled it up, I went, ooh. And included that in, when we, we were gonna do downstairs, has the same, too, down in the bottom, underneath the gymnasium, that has wood floors under there, but it used to be a shop. So it didn't really make it through.
You were there, just announced.
We're gonna keep looking at that and see what we can do with that, but, you know, that time will...
The programming runs aren't ready yet, besides the fitness room and the old wood shop, which we're using as a multipurpose room. So the two rooms, is it B wing? That we're going to be using aren't quite ready yet, they're still...
A wing.
Is it B A wing?
Going in the back, it's A wing.
Yeah, B A wing. Work needs to be done with the floors, and then some more stuff with the woodwork.
And that's where our little people program will go, that was over here, that was next to us, when we were at the high school. There are two rooms, and we have two now, young people programs that go on simultaneously, so we're gonna put, we're only waiting for flooring, and then we'll be ready in the fall. So we're gonna stay in Jenkins, the school department's been very gracious in letting us be in there, and it'll be up and ready to run in the fall. So, programming hasn't really skipped a beat, and the people of Situate should be happy about that, with the help of the school department, they've been very good to us. So, that's been our major focus this year, is to have our own space, and I can't be more tickled than to be in there right now. We're so happy to have our own space. We're on first floor, people just have to open the door and come in, instead of buzzing in, finding a parking spot, buzzing in and going upstairs. So we lost a lot of foot traffic. And what I've seen in the last two weeks has been tremendous, people stopping by, welcoming us in. We stuck our flag outside, and people were coming in, you know, to check it out, so we can't be happier about that.
It's nice.
Yes. So this year, the accomplishments, I'll go through that. We, the renovation of Gates was number one. We started a new adult pickleball, which bounced off the COA pickleball, and I striped the gym floor for it. I really hated putting the stripes down on there, but it really doesn't make that much of a difference, and I don't think I'll put any more stripes on that gym floor, because it's so beautiful. After, after we redid the gym floor at Gates, we put the pickleball lines down, and that's growing leaps and bounds, that I'm gonna add another day onto it, once basketball is over. The North Situate Playground was another big accomplishment for us. And I would like to tell you this really short story, and I think you deserve it, too, because you've backed us for the longest time on that. There was a young, young person who has disabilities, and she let us know that when she went to the playground, she was disabled, and she went to the playground, she was with her mother, and she closed her eyes, and when she opened it up, she couldn't believe that it was still there, she thought it was a dream. And she gets to now play in there with all the other kids. And so that's all because of how you people have supported it, and it really is paying off leaps and bounds. People are there all the time, and people are enjoying it, so thank you very much for that. What else did we do? The North Situate, oh, the Central Field Project, which is, the North Central Field softball field, has been completed, so we have two new projects with CPC completed this year. And we have, now the girls' high school team will have dugouts, backstops, all new drainage put in, so they can have a nice place while they're waiting for their other fields, which eventually will come, I'm sure, at the high school eventually.
Good.
Next one?
Yeah, and then one of our main programs, that's been a huge hit with us for the last year and a half, a year or so, is the Short Pugh Theater Project, it's our new drama program. That's headed by Erica McDermit, who's a local actress, and then also Kristen Swan. This sells out within minutes, like when it opens, so. We've also partnered with the Historical Society to be able to use Gar Hall for an affordable rate for us, so, yeah, we get to use it for three dates every season, so the two rehearsal days and then the final performance. And also SCTV has been filming our final performances there, so it's been pretty cool, and they get to show it on cable television, so. Oh, our extended day option, which we implemented last summer, it allows for parents to drop their children off about an hour and a half earlier, before camp, summer camp, and then also an hour and a half late pickup. And we're looking to expand on that this year. We also started a, an adult mercury sailing program last year, which successfully ran.
People enjoyed that, because we had, that's another CPC project that we had, and now we're putting the adults into the mercuries, and they're enjoying that. It's more of a type of a boat that is a day sailor, and it's not as intimidating as a J-24, which is a bigger boat. And they're really enjoying that, and it's a checklist, and I'm trying to make this more like a community sailing, more and more. We had that donation, I don't know if you remember, you accepted a donation from a citizen. So that boat now was used last summer, as soon as you went through the checklist of the mercury program, through our sailing director, Matty Vashon, you then got to take that boat out on your own, and sail around the harbor, and that has been a big hit. So it's really, really, truly a community sailing program, which we're very proud of.
How many mercuries do we have, Maura?
Six that were redone. We have one that's kind of parts, we kept for parts, so...
And there's also the new fleet of the 420s, which we used last year.
Which is another thing that you helped us with. We have a fleet of 420s, and our sailing program is really one of our signature programs, and it's been a huge success, it sells out. If you see them in the harbor, it says Recreation Department on the side of it, and it's really pretty to watch during the week. It's kind of quiet out in the harbor, so the kids are out there. They usually go out to the outer harbor, maybe even a little bit of the ocean, and the mercuries stay within the harbor. So it's really pretty to see them all out there in the summer during the week. I hope you get a chance to see that. One important thing that I think that we implemented last year was a director of the CIT volunteer. We noticed that we have quite a few volunteers, almost a hundred of them, in the summertime, that help us out with our summer programming. They come from the high school, and they fulfill their community service with us. And they start with eighth grade going into ninth grade, and then up until they don't need it anymore. And we noticed that we did need a director for that, so we incorporated a director to oversee that program, and, I mean, facilitate the volunteers, so they had guidance and where to go, how to do, how to make out an application, and to be truly a volunteer and not, you know, just somebody to oversee it, because I couldn't be at every place at every time, the end that I was down in Jenkins, and it'll be really valuable this summer to have her, you know, she was, her name is Jess Whittier, she came up through our program as a counselor, and is now a schoolteacher in Sandwich, and she's doing a marvelous job at that.
Those applications are due March 22nd.
Yeah.
Everyone else is interested.
Good plug.
So, the lifeguard training is our 10th year. We're very proud of that. We have Shaun DeRosa come up from Pennsylvania, and he trains our lifeguards, and he's been training for 10 years, and I really saw it last summer when we had a lost child in Hammerock. They did an unbelievable job of organizing and getting theirselves together. But that, that training is very important, and we're gonna continue doing it. It's a milestone, it's 10 years that we've been doing it, and I hope we keep doing that more and more.
And the last accomplishment we want to touch upon is the Mr. Sees Community Spirit Award, which went to Chris Roberts this year, who spent many years on the Rec Commission, and also has served this community many years, so. Thank you, Chris. And Mr. Sees is actually in his 30th year this year, so he'll be running his soccer program.
Is he still doing soccer?
He is.
He's awesome.
He is, he doesn't change, he just keeps going.
Yeah.
So 30 years this year, he'll be doing some kind of soccer. I don't know if it's been 30 years with the Rec, but he's done the soccer, he started the soccer volunteer, but he's, that's why we have the award named after him, because he doesn't take a penny. He spends every single Saturday over there from eight in the morning till four, five in the afternoon, in the springtime, it's invaluable.
Yeah.
So that's kind of our year. We, okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I was saying, you had a great year, you had a lot accomplished.
We had a fantastic year.
So thank you for all your work.
And I have to say, our staff is what makes us, it's, you know, we're here to direct and guide, but we do have the best people working for us, and, you know, and some of them might even be your children, or have been in the past, or, and it just keeps going. I can't say enough about the people that we have working for us, and volunteering.
I'm gonna pull rank.
Shaun, no, I was gonna give you rank.
Yeah, all right, I'm gonna, just, a couple of things, you know, that's just an understatement. I think it's that program, you know, recreation is what makes this town so special. We, I've seen it, my children have gone through it, I did when I was growing up here. The number of programs, then, I was gonna ask you, the number of children that pass through the programs based on the percentage of the budget. Jen used to rattle it off, she'd start by saying it. She sends three or four or five thousand kids through the program at 1% of the budget, or less, one quarter percent of the budget.
One quarter, 1% of the budget.
That's what I meant to say, right. So, it's just, you know, thank you, and thank all the volunteers, and, you know, and Tony's smiling, I'm missing stuff, he's gonna jump in in a minute, but really, seriously, it's really pretty neat, you know, to live in this town, thanks to folks like you.
Well, it's because you people support us, too. You have us in...
That's easy part, all right, it really is, Nick, it is.
Thank you for Gates, I can't tell you enough how happy and tickle I am to be.
Great, spread out.
It's good to hear.
And you're not moving, how's that?
Well, no, anyway, I'm in here, you don't have to bomb me out of there, especially at office.
Tony?
I don't want the office, I just want the floor.
I'm only kidding.
Tony, do you have some questions?
I don't have enough, I mean, the budget is pretty straightforward, it looks like a little bit of increase in payroll, some hours maybe for...
Step raises.
Yeah. So, I think Shaun and I used to do this over the years, you know, the value that we get for the budget of $150,000, and how many people it touches, and not only does it touch people that go to the camps, but the kids that learn so much working at the camps, as Maura said, you volunteer, then eventually you get paid, and it really is a kind of a rite of passage. And we just do a ton. You know, another one of those hands-like programs of these, I mean, tonight's budget is, kind of touches on all that stuff, all these great things that the town offers that really don't get a ton of recognition, but these are the things that makes it so special, you know, the Council on Aging, Purification, Rec, all these types of things, and it takes a lot of work, I know firsthand, you know, and I know Maura works retail off to get a park put in place, as well as run all the programs, and Nick the same way, to get all these things going, it takes a lot of work for three people, you know, it's pretty amazing, so.
Thank you.
Shaun?
All I'm gonna say is, I love how the Rec Department is kind of built on, year after year, I mean, you mentioned about the young actors, the kids, it's a great program, sold out. And we were talking about the sailing, and that's obviously selling out, and I'm like, and it's being creative, and trying to see what you have, and that's, that's what makes your departments fun. Granted, it's recreation, there's a lot of fun things to it, but I'm like, it's just, there's always something, you could be, you could be like static and just do the same thing year in and year out, but you keep changing with the times, and I love the innovativeness that, whether it's department or people come up with ideas, you make it happen, so.
Thank you.
Great.
We also have the Acon coming out, I want to remember that before I forget.
What's the date of that?
That's the day before Easter, March 1st.
March what?
31st.
31st, 10 a.m.
Easter Acon.
At Widow's Walk.
At Widow's Walk.
Yes, it lasts for about, maybe an hour?
It's fast to say.
That's an annual event that the Friends of Situate have.
Yeah, I love that, I love that. Karen?
I, just in digging through, I mean, with all the revolving funds, I have to say, I'm a little, a little, I'm still figuring it out myself, trying to figure out your budget, but do you feel that your, the salary you're offering to the, to the camp workers is gonna be adequate to attract enough people to...
I think it might be this year. I've had some discussions with different people, and I think we will be...
Will be okay this year?
Will be okay this year.
Okay.
Thank you for asking.
It's important, because it's such, it's such a successful program that I would hate to see diminished, because we can't get, you know, can't bring enough bodies in to serve our kids, so, it's great.
I'm always looking for lifeguards, that's another plug I'm gonna give myself, and now that I know that there's gonna be a new beach coming, that's the first thing, thought that came to my mind, I'll be having to guard that now. So if you know anybody that wants a job, they'll probably get one if they go through, you know, get certifications.
Do you help get the young girls and boys certified, is that, you know, if they're...
We used to, but we found that it did not work. It got the low enrollment that happened, and we were competing with spring sports and vacation time, and it just didn't work, so they go out on their own, and they do it like in December and February.
Oh, good.
And they get it like at the Y, or the Weymouth Club, or...
And that's a first aid type certification?
Waterfront and lifeguard.
Yeah, we have, we hold it to a standard that we want waterfront certified, and it starts with a lifeguard that has certification for a pool, and then the next one is for waterfront, which is 10 hours more, and the next one's for like a, what do you call those things, those, those...
T-FIBs?
No, the...
A D?
No, Water Whiz, what's that thing?
The what?
Water Whiz, down the Cape, those...
Oh, a water...[1741.52] Oh, a water.
Water Park.
A Water Park.
Yeah. So we don't have to deal with that.
We don't have one of those.
No. But there's three levels that you have.
No, we're not. It's a pyramid.
Sorry. I'm just tired.
Well, can't thank you guys enough. Like Tony had already recapped, really not a huge change in your budgets. So thank you so much for everything that you do and continue to do. You do a great job.
We love it.
We're here to keep supporting you and through the whole field process as well. I think you've got a board that supports the needs for fields as well. So as we.
Yeah, I just have a study done, by the way. I did have a study. I connect with him all the time for this townwide study.
Yep.
It just got back, so we're looking at it.
It was a draft form, so we look forward to looking through it a little bit more. Great.
And we'll be back. We'll talk about it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Have a great night. Thank you.
Thanks. See you, guys.
Next is Don, the veterans, number 543.
He wouldn't mind waiting. Take him out of order. Take him out of order.
Take who out of order?
This one. Take him last.
I was going to say things like that, but everybody's been waiting. So just give folks a heads up. We have a couple of more to go through and then we'll, we'll probably take a five or 10 minute break after we're done with all the budgets. Just so folks have an expectation. So, Don?
So, good evening. So with the veterans department, what I've found so far going forward is we're very busy, which is, we can handle everything that's going on. But it's nice to see that we are busy. That means we're getting the word out. We're doing our job. A lot of federal claims coming in. I'm handling that right now. There's a new system in place called Vetrespec that I'm gonna start incorporating and switching our paper files over to. And I think that will really help in the process. So with my budget, I would say 59% of my budget right now comes in at, with the Chapter 115 program. Our veterans and dependents and their family in the town that fall on a little bit of hard time. It's a, it's a great program. So again, that's like about 59% of my budget. Of that budget, of that money, 75% comes back to the town reimbursed through the state. So it's a great program. Right now, we have 15 clients. Unfortunately, seven of them have been terminated. And when I say terminated, unfortunately, five have passed, two have transferred. It happens. This is a part of the budget where we have to sit there and try and forecast what we need in there. Over the last six years, we've done a great job on that. I foresee that number going up again for the need. The other part would be care of veterans' graves. Again, that is also reimbursed back to the town at 75% rate. With, again, with the Chapter 115 and the other services that we have, I have to circle back. And now that unfortunately John has left, I'm gonna circle back to the Situate TV, see if they can do some PSAs and again, get that out. Those were great when we did them. I wanna do those again. But the word is out there. I, even today, just going out and seeing a client, I stopped and someone came up to me and was talking to me and just said, the word is out. I've sent so many people up to see you and they just have great things to say about you, how quick you are. And some of, some of these people have been probably from, the earliest one I had is probably WW2 to, you know, recent. And I have to say that we get them through quick. We get these claims in quick and we get a high success rate. Right now, I, right now, it's 100%. I haven't lost a case, so, which is great. And again, that helps on the other end of that Chapter 115 because that's federal money and this is self-sustaining money for them. They don't have to go on these programs if they get that extra disability. And it's a, it's a great program. So hopefully, again, when we get the Vetrespec in, it'll take a little bit of the pressure off me to get these cases through. But right now, I'm handling them. So I'm pretty confident with that.
When do you think you'll get the new software in?
Again, I just, I just actually received a letter. I don't know, Jim, if you saw this. You've probably been very busy anyways. But it's, it just came in. So obviously, it's, it's from the state about the program. It's time to sign up. It's, again, the license is $449 a year. The one, one-time deal, we buy the signature pad. But again, it'll be a lot of work just taking all the files I've done over the last six years and putting them in the system. But once I do, it's, again, whoever steps in after me is just gonna be, he's gonna love it. Or she, they're gonna love it. But yeah, so that's, again, that came out today. They were just trying to remind us to put it in the budget. And I just, I kind of delayed on it because I wanted to see how the system worked. Everyone I talked to when I went up to Lemmster for our training was, they love it. They took a little bit of a learning curve, but now they're on to it. And they said, it's, it's a great system. You can't do without it. So we will have that. Again, with going forward challenges, they're the same challenges I've seen over the last six years. And part of that increase more was probably on the, unfortunately, on the mental health side and drug addictions. Our office is handling it. I mean, we have the state backing. So we have resources that are over my pay grade or my level. But I handle them in their office. I get them to who they need to be seen with and.
And do you partner with Ann Marie Galvin on any of that?
No, she's.
To connect resources?
Yeah. The only way that would happen is if a veteran maybe came across her, you know, and they, and same with Jen or anyone else, Alara. Because my resources are strictly for veterans and their family.
Yeah.
So we, it's our separate, separate tools. But one, some of the cases could be a little bit difficult where they may be a veteran and not a veteran. And yes, we've worked together on that, even with the Situate Police. But strictly with me, they have to be a veteran. They have to be qualified to get these benefits.
Right. No, I know that. I just didn't know if you tapped into some of her resources that she has to assist them. But I see what you're saying.
Yeah. I mean, they, they do. I mean, I have to admit that the federal and the state side of it, the veterans covered, their resources are really great. We have also, and it looks like, hopefully it'll get passed, and for the Cudworth expansion, that should be, you know, that should put us, if this all goes through, which I believe it will, we should be set for a while. It's a project that's well overdue and I'm glad it's on the forefront and getting done. So that looks great going forward. And other than that, I, like, again, everything's running well. I have the new assistant and she's getting up to speed on the systems. And that's been working out great. And she seems very comfortable in there.
Great. Awesome. Thank you. Karen, did you have any questions?
No. Thank you for all your work.
Sean?
No, I don't either.
Tony?
Just one quick one. Nancy, the subsidy for the substance, is that net or gross?
That's gross.
And does the rest become?
It's about a year delay. So I expect when we get our last reimbursement in November for the second quarter of 2017.
So does it come in local receipts?
Yeah, local.
John?
Don, you do a great job. You know, I know that it's hard work. And since you've taken over, it's, it's great for the veterans. Thank you.
Don, thank you. Anything else that you need from us or?
I'm good. Good to go.
All right. Well, thank you. Thanks for, you do a great job. And thanks for everything you do. Okay. Brad? All right. Did you, are you coming up with everybody or how are you doing?
I think I'll make a quick little.
A quick overview? Okay. And then we'll go to conservation and coastal resources. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
That was your first budget exercise, so.
Yes.
Any quick overview highlights that you're working on and?
Yeah. So I just wanted to just, for folks on TV tonight and others that are here, I may not be familiar with the, the new structure. So the planning and development department was voted in at last town meeting, as was my position. The purpose of it was to coordinate building inspections, planning, conservation efforts. A lot of the folks that kind of touched on all the development aspects in town. And also the, the related boards and committees that kind of fall within that purview. So planning, conservation, and zoning board of appeals. I personally staffed the economic development commission as well. So the purpose, you know, again, of this, this new department, this new structure, was to coordinate the efforts amongst those departments, committees, and boards, but also kind of coordinate efforts amongst other town departments as well. So working with DPW, recreation, police, fire, et cetera. So that's been, you know, that's kind of been our challenge so far. And I think if you look at the budget for FY19, will be kind of an overarching theme of, you know, what we'll try to be work on in the coming year as well. In terms of, and I won't delve into any of the great stuff that my other folks are here to talk about tonight, but just kind of touch on some of the, the kind of high level kind of things that I'll be working on and that, you know, we will, as a department, be working on. So again, that, the first one is just that kind of interdepartment, inter-board, committee communication, collaboration. Also, something that'll probably take up a lot of my time in the coming year, if we get funded at town meeting, we'll be working on the update of the town's master plan. And that's gonna be a comprehensive effort. Again, we'd have a master plan steering committee. We'd be working with all the departments, boards, and have a robust public participation process as well. The current plan's about 14 years old, 14, 15 years old. So certainly ready for a refresh. But again, rather than kind of a routine update, really just trying to really involve the public. And also, given what we just saw a few days ago, what we're about to see tomorrow, kind of thread through the theme of sustainability and climate resilience and all the kind of required themes and chapters in the plan. So in addition to the master plan, I'd like to, you know, given my background, assist Nancy where possible on implementing our shoreline protection plan. You know, we have a great opportunity with this, the Army Corps application coming up. And I'm sure we'll stay on top of other opportunities and other ongoing projects as that's, you know, vital moving forward with the town. Another item that'd be pursuing or in cooperation with the EDC is our Green Bush Initiative that just kicked off at the beginning of the year. We had a stakeholder meeting with local businesses. The next step would be to reach out to members of the public. And really, rather than get ahead of ourselves and try to push forward with any zoning or any other kind of initiatives, what we're trying to do is, again, just kind of get that robust citizen participation to let folks know what's already happened, what's happening now, and get input on where they'd like to go in the future. So those are, those are the kind of high level things that we'll be working. Oh, and how could I forget? Infrastructure. So I'll be working with town administrator, DPW, and others, trying to coordinate our studies into wastewater and water, whether it be through the regional sewer project or on an individual project basis. Again, that, I think it's a unique niche that, you know, this department can help kind of run interference between not only town departments, but state and federal agencies as well. In terms of, again, we'll go through these individually as we go through the various departments. But for the large part, you know, all of our departments are generally personnel. Our budget, you know, we don't have any operating, large operating costs. So it's primarily personnel. There's small line items for printing, copying, some technical services. But again, I would imagine most of the increases there are union-related and/or cost of living increases. So that's my very brief overview. But again, if you have any questions now or as we go through, I'd be happy to join my folks up.
Nope. I welcome you, you know, and your expertise to bring all these departments together and have a united, you know, approach to development and planning in town. I think the whole board, you know, that was the, obviously, the impetus behind putting the position up there. So we welcome you. And I hope, I know the last six months is probably gonna whirlwind for you to kind of figure things out. So we appreciate that. And for me personally, one thing that I always struggle with is just, you know, planning moving forward is to have that, that rote knowledge of where we are with sewer capacity and our water issues. So when folks do come before us, that we've got good information, we've got up-to-date information, and we're not constantly trying to reinvent the wheel as to, you know, what our status is with regards to those two resources. So I, that's personally one of the greatest assets I think you can help us with, is just keeping track of, of all that. So we're properly allocating any new, you know, licenses or whatever. So.
Thank you.
Karen, or if anybody else, anything else? Brad or?
I just, one question about the master plan committee, the process for putting together, you know, who, who will participate in that and timing for that. Because that's obviously so important to the town.
Yeah.
And I don't know how that works.
So we'd have, I mean, initially, before we even started, there'd be a selection process to pick the consultant that would help. But after we get a consultant on board, assuming we could start in July or August, probably optimistically, it'd be a year. Realistically, it'd be a year and a half. And the, you know, steering committee, I think, would be representatives from the primary boards, you know, whose fingerprints would be on this. So we'd have Board of Selectmen, Planning, Conservation, Rec. So I think we'd have probably a fairly large group, which, you know.
Would it be public reps on that?
Yeah, we'd have at-large reps as well. And again, I think we'd want to have as many opportunities to, whether it be charrettes, workshops, varying times, whether it be night weekends, to get as much, you know, input as we can.
That's all. Sean?
Nope. Just a comment. You know, when we had talked about creating this position, I just really couldn't picture who might fill that role until I met Brad. And I thought, I think you're doing a lot of the job. Everything I've heard has been very positive. Thank you and keep up the good work. Thank you. Very good fit.
Yeah. The only thing I'd add is the forward thinking. You know, that's, you're bringing that to the position and that's what we're all looking for. Keep it up.
Sean?
Bring them all up. Let's go through the budget.
All right.
I'm set. Thank you.
So thank, Amy and Nancy? Just conservation, 171. Welcome.
Hi, how are you?
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you too.
Amy's our new conservation officer. If folks haven't met her or seen her, because I know she's been very busy as well.
This weekend as well?
Yeah. And obviously, we all know Amy, our coastal resource officer. So a quick overview.
Okay.
Goals, highlights, and done. I'll just dive in on the numbers or anything you have.
Yeah, I'll try to, try to be brief. I know you have a packed agenda. So as you probably know, conservation office, we administer and enforce the state wetland and Situate wetland bylaws, Rivers Protection Act and Stormwater Bylaw. So we are the permitting and inspections authority. Where the boot's on the ground, we permit all the projects that are in our coastal and inland resource areas. So we're a very busy office. We are staffed with, in conservation, it's myself and administrative assistant. And Nancy is part of our budget, but she is also independent. And so she's the coastal resource officer. So basically, our budget is, like Brad explained, we are looking for maintaining our salaries and operational expenses for the office.
All right. So really, the budget is a $215,000 budget. It's actually down a little bit. From 221, right?
And I can explain that, actually. So the reason it's down is last year, we carried a part-time person who is still working right now, and that's Patrick Galvin. So at 10 hours a week, that was a line item of about $27,000. And so we're hoping to actually carry that through into this next fiscal year, although we were advised not to include it on the actual budget sheet at the time that the budget was put together.
And there was also a reduction in technical services. There was a request to double it and they wasn't supporting the prior year expenditures for it. So it was maintained and displaced and all. So that was that $2,000 delta.
Nancy, can you explain Nancy's, you know, budgetary in this?
Sure. So Nancy's salary is, when Nancy's salary was originally brought forward, four years ago, it was FEMA elevation grants, which funded her salary by about 30%. And it went down to 25%. And the FEMA elevation grants, I think there's three pending currently. We haven't gotten anything on them. But there is one, which is unusual for Nancy and her great writing skills. So for the last two years, her salary has been partially offset by the offshore protection money and the road to seawall line and the engineering budget. So we still appropriated $400,000, but $50,000 of it is responded to the conservation budget for the, for Nancy's salary. And then the other 150 is for projects and grant matches within the engineering budget.
How much is in this budget?
50.
Five zero. And Amy just said they want to keep Pat on next year, but it's not in the budget?
Not in the budget. That has a cost of $20,000.
So how do we do that? So that's not in here, but we're gonna keep him.
Right now, I'm not recommending it. We'd have to find that $20,000. Tony, you know how tight this budget is.
Okay.
So.
So it's.
It's not recommended at this point. It's not recommended at this point.
Quick. So what happened if you don't have it?
Well, it is listed as a risk and a challenge for the department. Obviously, the, the loss of staff is, is a challenge in that, you know, we have a very large permitting demand currently, as well as the other things that we do, you know, we sign off on every septic system, building permit, perform hundreds of inspections on the ground, looking at all these properties. So basically, it's, it's just, it's a, you know, balancing act, keeping the balls in the air, like you've heard from the other departments. So, you know, we'll, we'll do the best that we can, but time to time, you know, things will fall, fall through the cracks, and that would be probably enforcement, and time and effort to do things like revise regulations, which we have stormwater bylaw that we're working on with planning to try to revise and make that a little bit more clear and less burdensome on the homeowners. So it's things like that, that, you know, it's tough to juggle, but we, we do our best that we can. Another challenge that we have is that the longtime assistant in the office, Carol, is getting towards retirement, and so June is her projected approximate retirement date, and so we'll be filling that position, and that's considered a significant loss to the office, because she has such incredible knowledge of the position and everything in the office. So when that transition happens, that will fall towards herself. So again, it'll be a challenging time.
So I assume you're starting that search now?
Soon.
Yeah, soon.
Sean?
No. So Pat's not a part of the budget as of...
Correct. So we just go to the down, so as we wrap this whole thing up, and we see where the numbers fall out, then we...
Right, and this is the first I've heard of the secretary retiring, or the administrative assistant retiring, so she's going to go leave at one rate, someone's going to come in at another rate. It's not $20,000, but there would be a delta there that could be used towards hiring someone to help with enforcement.
Yeah. We'll figure it out.
Just a quick question, whoever's liaison, Pat implemented a, for a small fee, a small job, what was the term?
Minor activities permits.
Thank you. Still, you know, could we increase that possibly, or the fee for that, or, you know?
We could.
You know, it seems to, you know, it seems like you could, you know, that can be, you know, that's in and out easy enough, and is that taking a lot of your time?
Well, I mean, minor activities permits, they're, it's kind of a fine line you weave when you issue those, because they're not officially recognized by the state. So it's a way for us to internally track small projects that do not otherwise trigger the regular permitting process, like a notice of intent, but we use them specifically to deal with post-storm damage repair. And now, so for instance, for this nor'easter that just happened, actually, the state just declared a severe weather emergency declaration, so we won't, in fact, have to issue those minor activity permits. People that want to do the damage cleanup are, you're just going to be providing great notice, and until April 2nd will not have to permit, so.
And how are you letting them know that?
We have it up on the website, and I believe it's also an urgent alert on the front page, too.
Okay, terrific.
Just pull the permit or write the letter by April 2nd, not to do...
Right, so, so you just need to notify the state and the local office of what you're doing, and there's specific, it's, the policy is pretty specific about what you can and can't do, but it allows residents and the town to go out there and make the necessary repairs to post-storm damage, like return cobble to the beach, you know, clear the roadways, fix infrastructure, yeah, shore up buildings, but not rebuild. It's not like, you know, go ahead and build a new house or anything like that, but remove damage like trees, falling down trees.
Yep. You talked about that on Saturday.
Yeah.
Great.
So that's effective now?
It is, I mean, yes.
Will you be writing that letter?
I state that, just so people understand, that's like, if there's sand that they can take, they can now, under this, take it, put it back onto the beach, because there's sometimes commentary, people saying, "I remember way back when, we could do this all the time." State of emergency, now the state is saying you can do that with the cobble to get it out, so for private property, you can do it too.
Right, but there is a notification requirement, just that you put what you're going to do in writing, let us know.
Good.
And not just the local office, but the state, DPW, regional office.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Nancy, did you have anything you wanted to add? I know you have a ton of accomplishments here.
Sure.
Go ahead, just take a couple moments and...
So, the Coastal Resource Officers' position supports a variety of different departments, including planning, conservation, building, as well as DPW, engineering, and the Harbor Master, as, as well as I have liaisons with the state and federal government through permits and, and the activities that I work on. So it's been a very enjoyable experience, this is a great team, can't say enough about the people that we work with here in Situate. They just make this job so enjoyable, and makes me drive from New Bedford.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yes. So I've, as a, it kind of, it came up this weekend, the municipal vulnerability assessment, we're finalizing that plan and the actions that go along with it. It's a requirement for grants with the state in the future, you get extra checkpoints for it. The Situate will have theirs completed in time before the next round of grants come available. We'll be submitting a draft report to the state so that they can see that we've done the work, and we'd like to host a public meeting to finalize the plan and be completed on that part. I've also been working on the North Hammerock Dune and Roadway Elevation Project. We are in the engineering phase, and we're also in the preliminary permitting, which we need to get most of that work done by the, June 30th, for the grant application that we received from CZM. That is ongoing. We will have a public meeting, anticipating within the next month and a half, to discuss what the engineering prospects look like for not only just the dune, but the roadway elevation and the impacts to the residents. So we'll definitely be doing a lot of outreach to the area of Central Ave and Cliff, in order to make sure that they're getting all the information they need, because still an easement is required for this project to be moved forward.
Can we make sure that we have SCTV there videotaping it?
Absolutely.
So we can put it up on YouTube, so the folks that aren't there, you know, the summer residents, have an opportunity to see it? Because that's what we always come up against, is they don't have an opportunity to participate in a lot of this.
Yeah, so we, they can go back and look at the, the conceptual design presentations, there were two of them, and an easement presentation that was provided, where Situate TV came and, and viewed it, so they can go back and look at those if they have any questions that happened previous. We're also looking to see the North Jetty be repaired in the spring, so we have a right-of-entry agreement with the Army Corps, and it's their responsibility, so they will be coming out to make those repairs, which I'm very excited. Hopefully, they come back and do the South Jetty as well.
What's the timing on that?
They're just trying to get a contractor onboard, and that should be, they have a time of year restriction, too, so I'm hoping as the spring approaches that they'll be ready to go, otherwise, they'll probably end up being pushed to the fall. But they have, as far as I know, I stay in touch with them, they'll have everything in place. I've also been working on the South River dredge project. As you know, I came to you through the waterways, probably December of 2017, and discussed the project moving forward. So I worked tirelessly to get that project moved on. We are now going into the permit phase. Unfortunately, we were not able to attain the easements required to put the material on the Hammerock, in front of Hammerock on Central Ave, nor were we able to attain the ability to put the material on Fourth Cliff as well. The lengthy process of providing that opportunity with the, the Air Force really does actually have a presidential signature on it, and the timing was not going to work. It is an emergency. We do need to get the, the mouth of the, of the South River dredged, which is at the confluence of the North River, in order to allow for safe navigations. I am concerned with this past storm. We did see probably about five-foot loss at the, the north end of Fourth Cliff. That means that material is now in the river, which my guess is it's probably in that area where I'm going to be dredging.
Dredge, yeah.
Yeah, so that's a concern. So that's, that's going to move forward. Unfortunately, that will be disposed at mass base, so, so we'll be moving that project forward, and doing it in phases.
Okay. Sean?
Nancy, when you have time, could you, could you get the Air Force to the table one more time, and maybe Jim would sit in?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Before the whole cliff is in the North and South River, maybe they can sell it to us.
That's where our water main break was, because the cliff, the road is exposed, the water pipe, the water pipe is basically sticking out into space now. So once we're finally able to get to it, it's pretty easy to find. So Fourth Cliff is back on, the base is, there's no water to the base right now.
Right.
So, and again, the North Situate Beach Nourishment Project and a number of other small items that I'm continuing to push forward.
We appreciate it. Questions for Nancy?
No. Well, the great, the grant money you're bringing is outstanding, it's advancing the town, so thank you.
Thank you. You leave us speechless. Karen?
It's not Karen. At a clock at night.
No, it really is extraordinary, the amount of, the complexity of the projects that go forward because of your work. Thank you.
Without you, there's simply not a band what to do it, so we wouldn't be able to, we wouldn't have a beach, we wouldn't have a Hammerock Road.
As again, I couldn't do any of this without the support of all the staff. They really do provide me with the information that I need to, to do my work, and that's, that's what makes this enjoyable.
And we know you're passionate, you badger them for it, too, so...
They see you come and they run the other way. I just wanted to also say that I'm looking to have a public meeting within the next couple of weeks, including conservation, planning, building, border health, to provide residents with information who need to do any repairs or reconstructs. I know they're going to all have very similar questions, this is to streamline that. We'll have Situate Cable there at the meeting to be able to provide that as a link to residents, so they can view it if they couldn't make it to the meeting, in order to just give them the kinds of informations. I know I'm going to field a lot of questions about elevation grants, but I want to be able to give it to them in a way that they'll be able to understand and go back and look at that information, and as well as the other departments will have that opportunity, too. That way, we're not having the same, same conversation necessarily multiple, or maybe a hundred times, so...
Right, and with the emergency declaration expiring on April 2nd, all the work that is done after that date will trigger standard permitting through conservation.
Right.
So we expect a heavy influx of permitting due to the storm.
Well, let us know when that date is, so...
Absolutely. I'll try, I won't do it on a Tuesday, that you have a meeting, in case any of you'd like to attend.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Great.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Have a great night, I know, get some rest. So Planning, 175. That's probably pretty straightforward, right?
Good evening.
How are you this evening?
All right, how are you?
Great. So Karen, thank you, I know it's the first time probably presenting the budget, so, congratulations. I know it's been a couple months, but still. So we just want to go through just a couple of things that you're working on, and we'll get to the members.
All right, so the Planning Board administers the subdivision control law. We administer, along with Conservation, the stormwater bylaw and regulations. We also issue special permits for accessory dwelling units, residential clusters, mixed-use developments. We do site plan review, so we have a large range of projects we review. We also coordinate a lot with the Conservation Commission, Building Department, Health Department, and DPW for many aspects of these depart, of these projects, so we can try to get coordinated comments and consider those when we write decisions. We've been very, very busy in the past year with, you know, the largest project before Situate in many years is the Toll Brothers Residential Cluster Development. We anticipate winding down on that project this spring, so having a decision and in the next month or so.
I know it's taken a lot of your time, Karen.
That, that takes a lot of time for coordination. Some of the things we hope to also get done is to, we need to update the subdivision regulat, the stormwater regulations, and so we hope to have that done sometime in the next year. And then, looking ahead to the future, we have, zoning bylaw should probably be updated, subdivision rules and regulations should also be updated, and I'm also trying to keep an update on the subsidized housing inventory.
Just a few things to accomplish.
Yeah.
Keep yourself busy. Anybody have any questions for Karen? I mean, I think the biggest component increase of the budget is obviously adding Brad in there.
Right.
So that's the biggest...
That's the biggest component. It's mostly salary.
Yeah, exactly.
We do have some technical services in there, because we are going to need some outside help with updating the stormwater regulations, and so to make it, the bylaw was done two years ago at town meetings, so now the regulations have to be done.
Is, is that the difference between the Town Administrator budget line and the, and your recommended originally? There's a...
It's Brad's position.
Oh, that's...
After the administrator wants to move the position into the planning and inspections.
Okay. And just one question, the by, bylaw changes when they're completed, are those, is that required to be a town vote to change those, or I just don't know? It is?
Zoning bylaws are, have to be a town meeting.
Okay.
That's, they have to be town meeting articles. Subdivision regulations, stormwater regulations, that's just a public hearing through the Planning Board.
Okay.
And so there'll be two zoning articles on the, on the town meeting warrant for, for April.
Great. Thank you.
Sean, anything for Karen?
No. No, you, you're putting a nail in my head, just another person in the budget.
Karen, thank you.
Okay.
Can't thank you enough for everything, I know it's late, so, thank you for all your hard work, we appreciate it. 176 is zoning. Hi, Bob.
Good evening.
How are you?
Very well, thank you.
Sleepy.
Well, you know, no more than anyone else.
So thanks for coming in for this.
Not at all. So we'll do zoning first. The Board's mission, if you will, is to interpret and apply the zoning bylaws and related state statutes in a fair and impartial manner, and conduct hearings in a prompt and businesslike manner, making sure that everyone has heard, the applicants, any proponents or opponents from the, from the general public, and to render decisions that are appropriate. The Board's work has certainly increased, I think, over the past year, and will continue to do so. One of the major duties, as you all know, is to preside over 40B development, rules and regulations and conditions. And so we're engaged very heavily right now with Haringburg Meadow, and engaged also with Lawson Green, and that's going to be a continuing process over the, over the next few months at least. Not only engaged at our normal board meetings, which happen once a month, but we've had several interim or meetings, you know, in, in weeks that we wouldn't normally meet, specifically on those projects. It's very good for sort of public information and outreach. A couple of times, we've met at Public Safety, and, you know, we've gotten a lot of public input and a lot of good participation. Thirty, forty, fifty people sometimes come, come to these hearings, so that's the way it ought to be, and it's, it's been going well. Risks and challenges, basically, those or they. We also have, as you know, two vacant... We also have, as you know, two vacancies currently on the, or one vacancy and one prospective vacancy currently on the board. I believe you interviewed candidates tonight earlier, and it will be very, very helpful and really good to have a full board to meet, particularly in view of the nature and the sort of gravity of the situations that we're dealing with right now.
We agree. So, I just have a question about Lawson Green. When are they, how far along are they in the process? So, Lawson Green is the 100% affordable housing project.
Correct.
Behind central housing.
Yeah. They've had two public hearings, they probably will have at least one or two more. And then, there's a funding window, as I understand it, and I'm not as conversant, perhaps, as I ought to be, but they're shooting for a state-backed loan program that has a deadline. I don't know if that deadline's gonna be met, or if we will reach a certain stage in the process and then need to go on hold, sort of, for the next year's allocation from the state.
I hope not.
Yeah, so do I.
Brad, did you have a comment to that?
Yeah, I think they were trying to get into the spring round of the low income housing tax credit program.
Okay.
Probably butchered the name. But I think with the ZVA, they're willing to kind of accelerate the review process. I think they worry it'll get in, so, again, we've done all we can, trying to make sure they get the spring round, and the ZVA is already drafting a decision.
Is that the letter of support that Senator O'Connor wrote in?
Yeah, that's part, it certainly has to do with it, yeah.
Okay, good. Okay.
So, good, yeah, it's kind of touch and go, but hopefully, we can make that deadline this year.
Well, your budget's really all clerical.
Yeah, it's 99% personnel.
Twenty-four thousand dollar budget.
Right, mostly Ann Kelly, and, well, all Ann Kelly, as a matter of fact, and a few postage stamps here and there for butter notices, so it's pretty straightforward.
Great. Any questions for Bob?
No questions, but I just wanted to let you know that, I know that your mission, you know, for prompt and professional manner, I've gotten some feedback, 'cause I know that sometimes these meetings can be challenging, sometimes, people approaching the board, and that the board should be commended on how they represent the town, 'cause it's been great feedback that I've heard.
I'll pass that along, certainly.
Yeah. Yes. Thank you. Anything else with Bob?
No.
Okay, are you doing inspections as well, Bob?
I can do that.
All righty. 241.
So, that's a little bit more diverse and interesting menu. Obviously, we do our daily work of plan review, application review, processing and issuing permits, so that construction activities can continue. That's probably the simplest and most straightforward part of the department's work. Again, we are involved peripherally and sometimes heavily in activities of the health agent, activities of the conservation agent, activities of the planning board, and so, that's, you know, that's kind of a major use of time as well. And often, as I think Jen Keefe said, when plans come into us, particularly for larger projects, they aren't complete, or they need review by several departments, or, you know, they can, it's not a question of just in and out. They really need to make the rounds, and often go back to, the proponents or applicants get tweaked and amended, and then come back to us. So, that all takes a reasonable amount of time to do. We've seen the, this past year, the wrap-up of the three large community projects, the middle school, the public safety center, and the library, and that's very gratifying that all of those projects were successful, and we'll continue to monitor those. We're still collecting project closeout documentation, for example, which is gonna be extensive on all of these. And one of the real challenges, and I'll work with Kevin Kelly on this, is to how to file that, so that 15 years from now, when we've all, you know, gone on to other activities, perhaps, everybody knows where everything is and can lay their hands on it. That's no small task, so that'll be one of our goals going forward in this year. One of the projects or programs that interests me most is the Attorney General, State Attorney General's Office Receivership Program, which addresses derelict and abandoned properties. And Jen Keefe and I have worked on that, and we finally have a sort of poster child or an example going forward at 119 Kent Street, and we've just issued the first demolition permit, which is just to strip the house out and, you know, sort of get it all cleaned up for that project. But that will be totally renovated under the state program, and then resold back at market rates or at auction at the end of the process, so, you know, it'll go from being an eyesore to really being an attribute to the neighborhood. There's another house on Anvinal Road, which is currently in kind of bored-up, early construction phase, and that's gonna be the same type of program. So, we hope to, we've made an inventory of, not a lot, but perhaps half a dozen properties around town that could be candidates for this program, and we'd like to push forward with that, because so often, you know, you'll get an abandoned house in a neighborhood, and it just sits there for years and years, you know? There's a quirk in our bylaws that makes it difficult under some circumstances, after a period of time has passed, to come in and renovate a building like that, or even take it down and build a new building on a lot that might not be non-conforming. So, we'd like to work with all of that, because it really does have a huge effect on the surrounding neighborhood, to get something like that cleared up. We are always looking forward, and this is a real kind of forest, as opposed to the trees situation, but eventually, sometime in the future, our department files, and in fact, many departments' files in town hall, will have to be digitized, and will have to be available, you know, online and be able to sort, find things, and all of that. So, that's kind of a very long-range goal, but it would, it needs to be kept, you know, in view, because eventually, it will happen, it must happen.
And do you have financing for that in this year's budget at all?
No, not really. Again, we're still talking about how best to accomplish it. Not so much, you know, what it might cost, but just the fact that one of these days, it will need to be really considered.
Is anybody in the state doing it yet?
Ah, yes.
Okay, so we'll just tap into those resources.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, and, you know, Brad and I have spoken about that some once.
I know, I do, it can be very expensive.
Yeah.
So, a comprehensive plan would be, if you went into a database and clicked on a particular house, you would be able to see their building records, their Title V records, all would be digitized under that.
It's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work, and it's a lot of manual grunt work to do the digitizing, and then a lot of technical work to make sure everything is coded correctly and comes up. So, they're big projects, if you do them correctly.
Yeah, no question. We do have a start at it. We've now used, for a couple of years now, a system called View Permit, so we do have online records of pretty much everything that's happened, a very skeleton view of everything that's happened, but at least the basic statistics on everything for the past couple of years, and so, that'll be a start, you know? We'll just, at some point, start to work backwards. A couple of other things, I believe it was last year's town meeting that authorized some money for an update of our transition plan, which is basically a survey of town facilities from the point of view of barrier-free access. That was done last in 1995, and really should be redone, so hopefully, there'll be some movement towards doing that.
Isn't that what we already approved, we just need to do the RP?
Actually, I talked to Nancy about it today, I put it back on my hit-me-over-the-head-and-get-it-done list.
Yeah.
Good, 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 'cause we've been involved over the past year in several issues with the Architectural Access Board, all successfully resolved, but for a walkway at Jenkins, we now have applications in for variances to allow us to make wheelchair accessibility to a couple of our beaches, a reality.
Good.
Which, you know, will be hugely helpful. So, there's that part of it as well. You know, that about sizes it up. We're gonna see, besides the 40B projects, some larger-scale projects happening in town, I've no doubt. Green Bush is one. The development on the green, the MBTA parking lot site in Green Bush is gonna be substantial. A lot of work for the inspections people, a lot of work for the permitting end of it. Fifty Country Way is a fairly substantial project, although, because that's prefabricated, very interesting situation. You know, the boxes shipped to the site, and they just stack them up and bolt them together, almost literally, I mean, there's a little more to it than that, but our inspections are pretty much confined to that bolting-together aspect, and then a final, and then we do plumbing, electrical on any of the common areas that don't come as part of the prefabs. Prefabs, by the way, are inspected by the state, so they come sort of pre-done in that respect as well.
What state, Bob? Where they're built, or this?
No, no, Massachusetts.
Okay.
Yeah, they're built, these are built in Maine, I believe, but they're inspected by Massachusetts inspectors.
When?
During construction.
Okay.
'Cause they have to look, you know, at the components as they go together.
Yeah, right, right.
So, they have people right there at the factory.
Okay.
And, pretty interesting process.
Right.
So, that's about it. I mean, anything else, I'd be happy to answer. Again, our inspections budget is 99% personnel. There's been certain adjustments up and down. Neil is on for 19 hours a week now. We have taken, we were including, again, the difference between our request and what was approved is mainly Brad's situation moving over to planning. Previously, he'd been under the inspections Department, so, that pretty much accounts for.
There we go, thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate that. Any other questions for Bob?
Nope.
You answered it, so thank you.
All right, well, thank you.
Very thorough.
Thanks for everything, Bob, and get some rest as well, you've been out there. If folks don't know, Bob goes out and with the team to survey all the homes along the coast, so he's been working all weekend as well, so thank you.
We've done a bit of that.
I know. We appreciate it. EDC, Brad? Quick, quick, right?
In two minutes, you said you can do it less.
Oh, I can definitely do it less.
I had six questions.
So, level funded from last year, again, the primary charge of the EDC is to encourage economic development in town and to promote our branding and wayfinding program, so I will be providing primary staff support. And again, the major things that they'll be working on this year is the Green Bush Initiative. You know, obviously, they have a vested interest in the municipal infrastructure issues, they'll be, they'll be working with them on that, and then just moving forward with our branding and wayfinding sign package program, and just so I can probably stop getting all phone calls if I just answer this question now, that.
Sure.
We have been approached about the chamber sign, and we're working on it, so.
You're coordinating with them, thank you.
No, we will. We're gonna invite them to a future meeting and start talking about it, but we've had a lot of folks say, hey, what are you gonna do with that old sign on 3A, so.
Yeah, that old half a sign now.
That's on our FY19 agenda to talk about that.
Okay, great. Good work. Any questions for Brad?
Nothing.
Anyone?
No.
Nope. Brad, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
You, too.
Thank you, Brad. All right, we're gonna take a little bit of a break while Jim sets up, so, we were having Jim come on board in January. Every one of the board members had expressed to Jim that one of our main priorities is to get a senior center built. So, knowing with the site selection that was done after many public comments, as well as the meeting in October, and the board decided to cite the senior center at the Gates, Old Gates School property, we had asked Jim to kind of give us sort of a, you know, where are we today, and what are some of the options that we have before us with regards to dealing with the Gates School itself, understanding that the senior center's gonna be sitting on that same piece of land, and what should we be considering as we move forward?
Yep. First, anybody who's here for the draft select and the legalizing policy, we're gonna put that off, so you can leave now.
I was here for that.
Thank you for saying that.
I was here for that.
One of the first things when I came on board, this was one of the priorities put on my plate, and actually, during my preliminary interview, I was asked if I looked at any of the Old Gates studies and what I think. I had looked at them, my only reaction at that time was, look, whatever you do, save the gym, 'cause it reminds me of Hoosiers every time I go in, it's a beautiful neighborhood. My daughters played there. So, just where we are now, the town has hired an OPM, Vertex, owner's project manager, they're the owner's project manager for a public safety building, and just so everyone understands, under the state law, if you spend more than $1.5 million on a project, you hire the owner's project manager first, and then he helps you hire the architect. 'Cause I know there's a lot of questions, why are we hiring the project manager before the architect? That's state law, we have to. Vertex is very good, they did a wonderful job. Other public safety buildings, they're gonna be guiding us on this. We also have $500,000 currently scheduled in the capital plan to hire the architect. We met with the OPM and the building committee two weeks ago, and we are gonna increase that, but the $500,000 would give us would be a design and an estimated cost, so we're gonna put some additional money in there, probably in the $450,000 range, so we will actually be able to get to big documents and big costs when we go back to town meetings. So, instead of having inflated price, where we say, this is our estimate, plus we're putting in inflation, plus we're putting in a fluff factor, we will actually have it so we can get big documents and give, this is what the cost is, and give town meeting an actual firm cost. And if at any point, once we start this process, if we decide we need to get on a different road, you can take that step back, and it's not money that's spent poorly, you can just re, you know, kind of remove. So, let's first look at the building, so everybody has a sense of what we're talking about. This is first parish here. This is the gymnasium, the Veterans Memorial Gymnasium. Recreation's in this little wing right here now. This is the A Wing, this is the B Wing, and this is the C Wing. So, when we talk about those, those are the three areas that we're talking about. The two places that the senior center has kind of been envisioned, one is in this area, which would require the demolition of the C Wing, and the other is back in this part of the site, which would require the loss of the track and the field, and they would have to be replicated someplace else, and they would go away. So, those are the two places right now that are kind of in the mix for the senior center. So, let's go back, just look at a little bit where we were. 2014, the public facilities master plan, renovate and expand the library, that's been done. Build a new middle school, that's been done. Build a new public safety complex, that's been done. Renovate the gates as a town hall, town senate complex, council agent, town hall, school administration, recreation. Those are done, repurpose some of those, sell them, raise some money, five-year capital plan, and a management operations plan. 2016, the town had an adopted building reuse committee. Their recommendation was do not sell any of the gates at the town hall, because if we moved the town hall to the gates, one of the recommendations was to sell this property. So, I moved 3A, zone a commercial, maybe make some money off it. Their recommendation was to keep both of those. The gates should be renovated or torn down, and a solution for the senior center needs to be addressed. Their first option was for the gates to become a town senate, town hall, build the council agent there, with the town hall, schools, recreation, and the B Wing, take off the A Wing, take off the C Wing. Okay? So, if anybody gets confused where we're talking, just let me know. And then, this town hall complex would be repurposed for some other use. The section option was to tear the gates down, use it for recreation, build a new council agent facility, renovate this facility, move the school administration, move recreation, and build athletic fields. School administration is now in the high school, middle school, not the greatest space, but I can tell you the superintendent is not looking to spend a million dollars to relocate the school administration. The recreation is in part of the gates, and you heard me talking earlier, it is a beautiful office, I want her floor, they're gonna stay there. The last one, we'll get to. They voted preferable course is to keep the gates as a town senate campus, all right? So, where are we today? Library is complete, about a $12 million project. The middle school is complete, $75 million project. Public safety complex is substantially complete at an $18.45 million project. The board has voted to cite the council agent after Gates property, plus or minus $10 million, depending upon how it's configured, how big, what else we do up there. So, now, the question, we So now the question becomes, what do you do with the gates? Because we can't make a decision on the senior center on that property until we decide what's going to happen with that building. Because if you go back and look at that picture, it takes up the entire center of that property. So where that building is, is going to determine where the senior center is going to be. This, you already know, I'm just putting it out there for you to see. Since 2015, fiscal 2015, fiscal 2018, your taxes have gone up about $1,300, 20%. Fiscal 18 alone, the three projects listed above added $617 to your tax rate, because they were all over-armed, which means they go on top of the tax rate. If we spend all the money authorized, there's another $20.26, is that what it comes on? It does look like we're going to spend that, but it's there. This shows in graphic form, here's your big jump, 15 to 16, and then it keeps going up. So your senior taxes, you've all known your taxes have decreased, that's the reason why. On the horizon, senior center, that is one of the number one priorities of the board, plus or minus $10 million. Again, that depends on what we do, how big, where it goes. The Wamper Tuck, Cushing, and Hadley schools all need work. There's actually $65,000 in the capital plan to do a viability study of the Cushing and the Hadley. Those buildings are all built in 1950s. Between the three of them, they need roofs, HVAC, windows. Once you do those things, you've now kicked off the new accessibility codes, so the buildings will all be brought up to current handicap accessibility. It gets very expensive. We're estimating those can run anywhere from $9 to $15 million. An option to those would be to build a new elementary school and do away with one or more of the existing elementary schools. Given what the school building is seeing now, school building commission is seeing now, we estimated that it'd be around a $40 million building, upwards $24 million would be the town share based upon the middle school. Okay? So these aren't, we're not building the school today, we're not renovating the schools tomorrow, but these are things we know have to be done. We need to fix those schools or replace them. And that study that we're starting this year will kind of point us in the right direction on where we want to go, where the schools want to go. Water treatment distribution system needs constant work and upgrading, the treatment plan needs to be upgraded. Your water rates are projected to increase by 20% in the next fiscal year to cover the last of the $22 million water system project we are currently doing. The water, the sewer treatment plant needs work, the collection system needs work, and the whole system needs to be extended to those parts of town that don't have it. Although, these are fee-based items, you don't see them in your taxes, you don't have one pocket of money to pay your taxes and one pocket to pay your fees, it all comes out of the same pocket. So these are going to be costs that the residents, the situants are going to have to bear. These are in FY '20, so don't come back to me five years from now and tell me you told me the senior center was going to cost $110. But on FY '20, the senior center would add about $118 to your taxes. School repairs would add about $106, if you did it at the low end, to $9 million. And a new elementary school would add about $284. Again, FY '20, they wouldn't all go on the tax rate in FY '20, they would be whenever we approve them, but these are just projects that you see coming down that we are going to have to deal with. So the first scenario, just to repair the school buildings and build a senior center adds about $225 to the taxes. And the second one, with the new elementary school, adds about $402 to the taxes. And again, don't freak out, we're not doing these yet, we're just trying to figure anything. In perspective as to what's on the horizon, your taxes are now going up $402 right now, unless you've done a lot of work in the house and we're going to reassess you. So what's up with the Gates School? It's a big building, 112,000 square feet, it's on 17 acres. It is a mess. I'm not going to read the bullets, but up in there, it needs everything. It's also loaded with asbestos. There are 16 different level changes in the building now. If we tore down the C Wing and spent millions of dollars to renovate that building, we would go from 16 level changes to 14 level changes. So it is a very difficult building, because it's just been attitude changed over the Back in 2016, they estimated the cost of renovating that building at about $16 to $22 million. Today's dollars, looking at the new estimates we have, it's closer to $30 million. And that is before we think of what happened at the library. Where we took down a wall and said, huh, that's not supposed to be like that. This is an old building, it's had a lot of work done to it over the years, so the $30 million, once we open those walls, who knows? But that's the estimate right now. $30 million on the average single-family tax bill is $354. So what do we need to do, in my opinion? I think the town needs to look at what we want, what we need, and then prioritize. The first one is we need a new senior center. We've already put money up for that, we'll put more money up for that. It's probably the board's number one building priority at this point, so we're going to go forward and do that. We need to do something about the schools. Either repair them, replace them, I mean, I get calls from parents, there's children in classrooms and there's water dripping on them. Those buildings, they're all 1950 buildings. I'm not quite that old, but I need a lot of work too, because I can imagine a building that old. Water system, sewer system, we can't give up recreational facilities, we don't have enough. The gym needs work, the gates athletic fields, we need to do work here, as we've seen tonight. This is not a very big room, it's not very friendly for people who have accessibility issues. Mike, the other woman testified. So we need some more space here, some work here. It's a workable building, but it does need, does need some work. We want to save the gates as a town building. We want to find a use for, prepare 44. Do we need to save those? Again, that's a decision for you. I have those in a wants instead of a needs call, because I think there's other things that need to be done. So here are our options right now, as I see them. Put the senior center at the gates, renovate the B Wing as the town hall, renovate the gymnasium. Recreation stays where they are. Slight the senior center at the gates, see if we can give the B Wing to someone to maybe put senior housing in and develop it as a housing project. Renovate the gym. Third one, tear down the A Wing, tear down the B Wing, and tear down the C Wing. That means all we're going to leave is the gymnasium and that stub where recreation is. Renovate the gym, put the senior center where the B Wing is now, kind of looking forward towards the street. Maybe a small addition for the recreation in the back will save the A Wing. Slight the senior center there on the property, leave the building, we'll come back, we'll figure it out later. We estimate the cost of maintaining that building empty, about $65,000?
Please.
$65,000 annually, just leave the building empty. As a senior housing option, I do have someone who's looking at that for us to maybe develop as an option for senior housing. It would be problematic in site control and how do we convey that building while retaining the rest of the site. It's not impossible, but there would be issues involved. They haven't finished their review of that yet, but they're going to get back to me as to whether or not it's just big enough that they would be able to get enough units to make it feasible or fiscally viable for them at this point. So we're waiting here on that, but it would be problematic. So what I'm putting forth for the consideration for the board, just to think about, we're moving forward the senior center at the gates, that decision's not even made by the board. Demolish the gates, with the exception of the Veterans Memorial Gym and the little section where recreation is. Again, I don't want to touch that floor, it's absolutely gorgeous. I told them to put a little Celtic slow and wide, it'd be really cool. Locate the senior center where the B Wing is, with a connection to the rest of the building, so that the seniors would have access to the gymnasium, to those two recreation rooms we talked about underneath. If we kept the A Wing or added a small addition in the back where we have the toddler programs for those seniors who have childcare for their grandchildren, they'd be right there. It meets the whole multi-generational, multi-use that we've talked about. Renovate the gymnasium, have it made handicap accessible. Currently, the handicap accessibility is through the old gates, it is not very good accessibility. And then either renovate the A Wing or consider tearing it down and putting a small building on there for recreation. We no longer have to spend money on the old gates to save and preserve. Sufficient space for the senior center, for the current program, for expansion, for parking. Easy access to additional programmable space in the gym and the facilities underneath, access to the tracks and tennis courts, and if there's not displaced, the current recreation facilities, the track and the field that we have at the Gates School, will be leaving us of the cost of replicating those someplace else. Construct a new senior center, again, plus or minus $10 million. Tearing down the gates, we have estimates of about $1 million, that depends on how bad the asbestos is. The demolition was about $800, without including asbestos demolition in there, so it was about $1 million. Renovate, make the gym handicap accessible, that'll be determined. Renovate the A Wing or put a small building on the back to replicate that, that would be also determined. But no matter how you slice those costs, it is still going to be less than the $30 million that we're talking about, potentially, just to renovate the Gates building. I went through it kind of quick, because I know people have been sitting here all night and they want to discuss it, but that's where I am at this point. Happy to take any questions or what the board's pleasure is at this point.
You'll start? Or I'll start?
You always start with me.
Well, because...
I'll start.
Okay.
I'll start.
Go ahead.
You talked a lot of scenarios about...
Sean, I spent a lot of time going through these studies. They were done very well by the committees. The plan was excellent, the work that's there is excellent. I just looked at it and looked at what we've already put on the books, what we need to put on the books, and I thought, at this point, we need to make a decision on this. I just don't think it's fiscally viable to go forward with that project. I would be more than happy to renovate the gates. I would make myself a big office, I would take the gym floor out of Mar's office and put it in my office. It'd be fantastic. But from a fiscal policy, from a tax impact policy, I'm not sure it's the road that we should be going down at this point, because we're going to be planning to something that taxpayers might not have an appetite for when you look at those costs.
This is just kind of a general observation on what you just went slide by slide so fast. You're talking about all the different scenarios about taking off the A or the B or the A and C, but really leaving rec there, the gymnasium there, almost every one of them, leave the gym there with rec's offices, okay? You don't have to pull up any slide, but just, you know, that seemed to, you know, you made it loud and clear. They can't, while you're doing that, rec's got to go. There's no heat. I think the central heating system is in the B Wing, so they'll have no, they would, they'd have to leave there, I think.
What you'd have to do is either make...
Temporarily.
...a combination for temporary heat before you do demolition. Or you would start your construction phasing with constructing either a permanent heater...
All your mechanicals.
Give them their own mechanicals.
Yeah.
Or kind of take, I'm not a construction...
Oh, yeah, no, all right, all right.
But you've got to take down the A Wing, put new mechanicals in that'll serve both facilities, and tear down the old mechanicals and build...
All right, just, just think of that. Okay, you can't, you can't just send them down the street while you're doing all this stuff.
You'd have to make arrangements to keep that gym and either get some temporary heating, HVAC, or, there are always, we've talked to Vertex about it, there's a couple of different ways to...
All right, okay. I just jumped out first.
I mean, you know better than that, you can get trailers with just big industrial burners and you can put in there a heating system for, for as long as you want it. I know it's a lot to chew on, I know I went through it quickly, but you guys have been here for a while and I...
Well, I mean, granted, you've been here for a couple of months, we've been talking about this for 10 years. I like, I like the plan, I was a big supporter of putting everything in gates, and the more I look at the building, the more I see it, it's really not a useful building. You know, I like the facade and the historical aspect of it, but I guess we can build that, build a new building to look that way, if that's what is important to us. You know, I like the site because of the, the other activities around there, having kind of a central area for, for a lot of activities, the fields, the tennis courts, the library, all the proximity to that. The A Wing, I don't know if that's useful or not, I don't want to spend, I don't like spending a million dollars to knock something down, so I don't know if that's useful.
Yeah, I don't know either. Talking to Kevin Kelly, he said, eh, but, so that's why I kind of put it as either tear it down or renovate it. And what rec is doing in there now, we're not spending a lot of money on making that useful for rec at this point, so if we do end up deciding to take it down, we haven't put a lot of money in that to raise it.
And the other, other thing that I like is, I like, I like that site, that, that part of the site for senior center. I like it being where the current school is, as opposed to tucked back in the back or tucked over to the side.
It gives you, I tried to draw it, but I draw like a two-year-old. But it gives you a lot of options to kind of maintain this and then slide parking maybe over here somewhere or...
You'd have to have another entrance, you know, but all of that can be...
Yes, yeah. But you wouldn't have to just kind of clear-cut this whole thing and put parking out front and kind of do a lot of different things with the site to make it...
Prelimarily, I, I like a lot of the components of it.
John, did you want, I can give you more time, I'll jump in.
Let's, yeah, I'd like to hear what everybody has to say.
So I, I don't think anybody in this room has the, the expertise to actually determine what we can and can't do definitively. You know, we have to hire somebody to do that for us. I personally like the idea of the gym, the recreation, and to Tony's point, if we want to reduce the demolition costs, you know, exploring, utilizing that A Wing, and I'm staring at the picture so I can formulate my thoughts, you know, utilizing that way, bringing in maybe more social services there. So we have our health department there, social services there, veterans there, maybe some of the senior council agent offices or something goes there, so it allows for the space within the actual senior center to be more programmatic and, and open to things like that. So I, in my mind, what our next, you know, once the board gets an opportunity to think about this and, you know, I would, I would ask that we give ourselves a couple of days, at least next, next Tuesday, if not what we convene, but just to determine, you know, what are we going to ask our architects to do, really? And I'd like to see that option of with A, really, and see what that is.
One of the first things I did, again, I'm sorry I'm turning my back on people, but one of the first things I did when I got here and started reviewing some of the projects after meeting with the capital facilities committee, is we had $500,000 programmed to go into the A Wing to move situant community television there. And although getting situant community television into a spot where the community can actually get to it, you can't get to it now, it's in the high school, is a great idea. Spending $500,000 to put something into this building before we know if that building's going to stay or go, didn't make sense, so I pulled that off the capital plan for this year until we decided what we were going to do with this building. If the A Wing remains, you got, there's plenty of space there that SCTV could go in there and, you know, kind of...
And that's cable grant money, just so folks know. So that's the money that we have on the cable. That's not taxpayer money.
It's not taxation, it's...
Yeah. We pay our cable bills.
But, so that, that money we set aside, again, in the future, we save that, we can renovate it, take the money from cable to put towards the renovation and then move it up.
Well, we, go ahead, Karen.
Yeah, okay.
So, there's a lot to digest, obviously, and this work is great, because it gives us all of the factors that we really need to think about as a town and not just about the senior center, and that is what we really need to contemplate. We chose this site because of the merits of the site. Having more flexibility by removing the building is a great option. And I, I just, one question is, can we, can we scope the designs, assuming we go, get the approval at town meeting for the design phase? Can we give them the A/B scope within that?
We had that for, we had a couple of different categories of public safety.
Okay, within the, the means that were there, okay. And does that incorporate a traffic review as well in that piece of the design portion? I know you, they would...
I know you, they would drill down to it, but...
Yeah, I'll have to go back and look.
Okay, I would think, because clearly that is a concern of a lot of people of how, I think we can make it work because there are smart people that can figure it out, but it needs to be focused.
I mean, you've got a lot of traffic engineer, but you need to take this out.
Yeah, that's, to me, that's an easy piece.
Go this way, go that way. Sorry, again, you can't have, that's just asked the problem in the intersection. Now we have to come on and have to square off.
Yeah, to me, one of the biggest benefits of, of, the two biggest benefits of thinking about taking down, if not all of the structure, most of the structure, is we're going to have to do something with that building anyway. And we, we're paying for, you know, it's expensive to leave an empty building. I think it's dangerous, quite honestly, but that's a whole nother thing. And more importantly, well, as importantly, is maintaining the rec facilities. We are so short of rec facilities in this town. And that was, what, that was an almost two, what was it, a million and a half to relocate? Was in the original study's estimate cost. This was whatever it was, 12 million in the original survey, a million two, I forget, it was...
A lot of fuss.
I'm sure Gordon knows.
Million two.
It was a million two to relocate this. So that goes off the table right now, reducing that cost for the project. And, yeah, and with the additional reduction of having to deal with that building at some point, I would love to see, and we, we chose that site because we all felt that keeping it as the center of our community was an important thing as well. But if we can bring those costs in line and get all these other benefits, I think there's some merit to studying it.
And it's, you know, the library's right there, lots of green facilities right there. So recreation, library, senior center, you bring all the parts of the town government, everybody likes. You leave the town hall forced to, you know, nobody really likes town here away from the deposit. But it does give you a nice, I hate the word synergy, but I'm tired and...
It's synergistic.
But it does provide, having there with the recreation use, with the library use, it does provide a nice synergy for those things that, you know, people can get back and forth and go to the library, go to the senior center. As Mara said, they've striped the gym for pickleball during the day. There's really nobody in that gym, so the gym's available for, for program by seniors and it's a fabulous space. It's like Joaquin Hoosier's movie, it's a beautiful old style gymnasium, probably is.
Sean?
Don't know if anybody has the answer to this, but the A wing structure building, square footage, does anybody recall what that is?
I was curious, what the square footage of that was?
It's two floors, so it's at least probably three, I can't remember.
How would it compare to town hall?
Twenty, thirty thousand?
There's 120 on the whole thing.
It's going to be at least three classrooms per side, so six, 12 classrooms.
Twenty-four?
Four hundred square feet per classroom, so...
By comparison to town hall, could town hall fit into that section itself? I don't know the answer to that. The other question I had was, you'd have kind of a bifurcated town hall. You know, you mentioned, is that something structurally makes sense? Maybe it does. It's just, you know, you're, you're the administrator on that.
Ideally, you know, I mean, ideally, I would like to have this sort of apartment here, the water department here. They're already all located elsewhere.
He did.
You know, it's, from a management standpoint, it's easier if it's that way. From an access citizen standpoint, if you can group those uses together that makes sense, we can manage it easier than having someone go here and then get told to go down there and then go back and go somewhere over there, so...
Kind of like what we have here though.
You know, the recreation is already not here, so, you know, we already managed that. Councilon aging is already not here. So the department's being dispersed, you know, it's manageable, it's not a big issue.
So my, my major concern is, is what reared during the demolition of the library, which is asbestos. That's, that's a major issue. And, you know, the cost of renovating it, you know, we estimated initially it being about, was it 18, 19 million and then what, 23, 30 million? I mean, and who knows, it could be more. So my concern is, the building as a whole, I think fair consideration is to demo the whole thing, unless you could figure some other use for it. Aesthetically, it's gorgeous, but originally, it's a square school building is what it was until they renovated it in the 30s to add the front. I mean, unless you're going to renovate it and put town hall in there, I don't see what other use you can use it for.
Asbestos, probably all your pipes are asbestos, tile flooring, asbestos.
This is asbestos where you don't even know.
The caulk around the windows is asbestos.
The foundation.
There's roost, yeah. There's probably asbestos in the concrete.
Right, so...
Serious consideration I'm looking at is demo the whole thing, not the veterans memorial gymnasium or the section. But I think it's disjointed, it was added on throughout the years. I just don't think it makes sense to keep the structure. You can take it down. I know, Mike, you're disappointed because you want to keep it, but I'm like, I don't know what we can put in there.
The fact that feels just the opposite, John.
So wait, before we get, before we, before we do this, let's just...
My whole point is, I'm like, $30 million for priority at this point. Made sense when we were looking at the feasibility study five years ago, 2013, we're trying to make, save taxpayers' money by putting everything under one roof, renovating it, trying to get the biggest bang for a taxpayer buck. It's just not going to work. So my, my feeling on that is, I really have the opinion it should come down. Whether or not you can get town hall in there and bifurcating, I'm not sure whether that's wise because now you've got two roofs that you have to go back between. If you can, great, but I do like the entryway. I think it's, would be nice to keep that. I think locating it originally, we were looking at where the C wing is, where the original town hall was for over 120 years, might have been nice, but functionally, if you're able to locate it in the B wing, it'd be great. Great entryway, that the fields have its ability to connect with the gymnasium, with all the potential programic uses. I'm like, that would make sense.
And as Tony said, you could, you could do something to the facade.
Yeah, replicate it somehow.
Spend a little more money on the facade to make it look...
Absolutely.
Like it did.
At least a visual back, some of it, brick French and, and all that stuff.
I've got a few things to say.
Be nice.
Sean has a couple of things.
All right. Everyone kind of touched on everything. The location cannot get any better for whatever you do. I don't care if it's a senior center, town hall, that's a fantastic location. The easy stuff is the C wing. C wing is a no-brainer. That comes off no matter what. Karen and I sat through the two or three years of the library project. That building was built in 1974, less, you know. This building, you know, there'll be asbestos, like I said.
Everywhere.
Yeah. But having said that, we ask residents to hold off, you know, if I was going to tear my house down, I wouldn't be able to tear it down for a year. Demolition delay, by the way.
We're also demolishing delay.
I think, I think that'd be a tough sell. I, I like old buildings. Take, take the cost out of it, you know, if you can. I know you can't, but for now, I think, I think people would be up in arms if you're going to tear that B wing down. I don't care if you can replicate it, it's not the same. I just, C wing, A wing, not a big deal, but...
You know, I'm a history guy. I probably would have been a history major, but I convinced myself the political science had to do, that a job prospect, so that worked out. But, you know, we're not, we're not talking the Adams historic site here. It was, it was built around 1900. It was given that look in the 1930s.
Jim, we tried to take a telephone pole down on the West End. That wasn't going to, that didn't happen. Good luck.
We tried to put a traffic plan up when I was at Lowell too, that didn't work out very well, you know. You know, I understand.
Certainly not without...
I understand, it's not going to be without controversy, but...
It just means a lot to a lot of people. I just, you know, and, 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 you know, I, as much as anyone, want to see a senior center, we all do, built perfect for the next 100 years, you know, so...
I, I agree with you that it means a lot to a lot of people. I agree with that. I think it's a beautiful building. Again, I have a picture in my office right in the middle there, it's going to have a beautiful view, it's going to be nice. But I just can't get my arms around the fact that it's going to cost $30 million or more to do that.
So Sean, I felt exactly the same way as you did.
And we did. We, yeah, we, you know, then you flipped on me, but that's all right.
Then you walk in it and you're like...
Oh, Tony, I went to, two, two years or was it, that was a little longer, two years I was there.
No, but it's just not functional.
I know that, I know that, yeah.
You go this way, then you go three steps and you go up here.
And there's ramps and everything else, right.
And the concern I have is this...
It's a beautiful building, but I just...
On the outside.
And we, we determined...
No, I, I realize when we opened up the walls...
We determined it wasn't functional for a middle school. We certainly wouldn't want to put an elementary school if we didn't decide not going to put a middle school there, not going to bring the high school back there. So you want to put seniors in there. Then you say town hall, you could, but then you got to put an elevator, you got to renovate it. You've got these issues that you say, would the money be better spent on this building? Remember Rick Agnew saying, you can always go up, you put an elevator on, the bones of this, this building is here. Now you can change the facade here.
You can go that way now.
Yeah.
The police station's not there, so...
You got more expansion.
If you put addition on there with even just a couple of big meeting rooms, then you'd have some, some large meeting space.
And the one thing I will say is that, whatever we decide, I will say, town hall's not off the radar to deal with because it does need to be dealt with. You know, we need to make this accessible. It's got to be better offices. This is a terrible hearing room for big projects or big, you know, meetings and hearings. And, but I will say, so then you say, what about if we put senior housing in there? If there's asbestos in there, there's no developer who's going to say, oh, pay an arm and a leg for it to take out asbestos and then rework the interior of it to keep the, the view of it. And then you'd say, you know, is that what you want, senior housing? I just...
You would almost, you would probably have to give the building to someone.
It would.
So here you go, take the building.
So you're not going to make any money off that. You can then use to defer. So as much as I love history, and I say, 1916 was when it was built, originally square building, they did the renovation in the 30s to add the front, and they had it on the wings. And I wanted to keep the, what's the library now, but it used to be the gymnasium where they used to have town hall, town meeting. Love to. But, you know, you get to your wants and your needs, and you have to begin to ask yourself, is this a need or is this a want? And if we were going to put in, I think, the library and, you know, senior center and, you know, town hall, and you could do it for $30 million, that would have been great. That was kind of what we were envisioning in town, you know, back in 2014. But, you know, you got to move and, and look at it. And that's how I'm looking at it. I'm like, the, the library was an eye-opener. The fact that the asbestos from 1976 was in a building that was built 1977 is just unfortunate.
It's just one of the common things. And the other thing that we're talking about here is spending a lot of money. I think we really have to, I don't think we can do all this stuff at once. I mean, I think if you're going to knock it down and build a senior center, I don't think we'll move the town hall. I mean, it's going to be, this...
It'll be here for a while.
We're talking about 10, 15 years worth of capital projects to get everything that we're talking about here. But if we set it upright, it'll have the ability to grow on the side.
And the schools clearly have structural building issues that are going to have to be addressed. Whether people want to hear it or not, it's just a fact of reality.
Before town hall.
You know, and so that's going to happen. And so I'm like, you know, it's, right now, the way I'm looking at it, I, I think, you know, we got to, to me, it probably has to come down.
Yeah, let me be honest, my, my to-do list when I got the job was not to come in, deal with 200-year storms in two months and then recommend tearing down a building in the community, but...
We're just warming up, Jim.
When you guys interviewed me, one of the things that you looked at and one of the things that you brought attention to was the way the taxes have gone up and the impact on the community and the projects we had, and how are we going to plan for those, and what's the impact going to be? And when I started going through those and saying, and this, and this, and this, and this, you know, I just, I didn't see that we could keep asking and then say, all right, yeah, now you've done this, you've done this, you've done this, now can we have $30 million to do this? I didn't think it was realistic, and if it's not realistic, then we should just stop talking about it and, and move on to something else, you know. Kind of wasn't my plan, even say, another building everybody likes? I think we should tear it down. It's not what I was planning, but we need to make a decision on this so we can make a decision on the senior center, being on that site, where it's going to go and how we're going to do it sooner rather than later so that when we hire the architect, he has the right direction to get us where we want to go.
Do you mind if I take some questions? I know. I wanted to hear what everyone had to say. I know. Mike, I know you, I cut you off, so get to the floor first.
But in response to John, I couldn't agree with you more, John. I think, I think keeping the gym and tearing down the rest is, is at this point the only realistic way to go. I was in favor of doing that when we were considering building the new, replacing the middle school with a new middle school there, tear the whole thing down, lift the facade because what do people like? People like the facade and the hoopla.
Yeah, just replicate it.
They hate the inside of the building, they hate every other part of the building. The back of the building's ugly, the sides of the building is ugly. They like the facade and the hoopla. And as do I, but...
Some like floors, though.
You can see that floor, the carpeting on it, so we tore up the carpeting.
I remember that floor, I went to school there when you can see that floor. But to me, that's the way to go, tear it down. Go to the senior center there if that's where you want the senior center and just move on. But trying to do anything other than building new, you need to make it look nice because you have the Cutworth historical site there.
Absolutely, yeah.
And it has to look historical. Keep the, don't throw the hoopla away, put the store in there.
I'd like to see the, the old pictures of the town hall that was there and see if there's some way that you can kind of incorporate that New England or South Shore situat feel to it.
And if I'm not mistaken, when we were considering rebuilding Gaten Middle School there, the plan was to move the little red schoolhouse to, above where the C wing is now, because, again, if I'm not mistaken, that was one of the, it used to sit there as well, so...
I will say, to Mike's point, the Historical Society may not like it, but I have to tell you, I think that's a valid consideration because of the use of access and getting around there. It may be a consideration they have to think about.
And when we...
It was moved before.
Exactly. When we were talking about building a new school there, that was in the way of adequate access and parking because the plan was to make it look nice in the front and have all the access and entrance in the back.
And I did think about, the Cutworth house is this one right here?
Yes.
In the front? So I did kind of think about that because no matter what we do here, this road has to move. And if you shift that road somehow this way, you basically open up more green space around the house and give it a little more curb appeal, for lack of a better putting, besides the cars going right up against it right now. So you could extend that back and provide a little more green space.
Bob?
Bob Larezo, 26 second really. Jim, could you give us a point of clarification that in much of the iterations that you're laying out, whether it's taking B down or C down or A down, when you use the word recreation in that?
Yep.
Fixing the gym, adding programs, moving rec, does that get, could that be funded through CPC?
Yeah, some of it, yep.
So, so the burden of reorganizing this campus into something that's geared more towards recreation and fields is less of a burden on taxpayers?
Well, you could, you could break off what the cost of the recreation portion was from an accounting standpoint, and Nancy can answer better than I can, but yeah, you could raise money in the CPC on that. It'd be a little bit of a bonding.
You could do it with the fields.
I'm not sure you could really do it with the building.
Historically, maybe.
It's a store. I don't know if that's.
It'd be recreational.
It's a Hoosiers gym.
Recreational, yeah. I mean, possibly, let's say possibly.
I don't think it's that problematic.
I mean, there's not a ton of money in CPC anyways. There's only $3 million bucks. Unless you can, no, if you're going to make it dry.
What you're taking, and you're adding a whole tax increase, is $3 million bucks in these. Whatever you put in the CPC, which is on your tax rate, you're basically funding that for half.
Right.
You know, you're asking things you can do with CPC, it'll leave you with a tax burden, but I don't think much of those are going to happen.
All right, well, I think it's.
Seeing a lot of stunned faces.
Yeah, well, it's a lot, you know, it's a lot to digest. It's exactly what we wanted, had asked you to sort of just lay out for us so that we can come back. You know, my hope is, you know, by Tuesday, because, you know, we have this article on annual town meeting, and I think we need to flush it out with our constituents a little bit, you know, and come back with a little clearer direction for that article. Dr. Price?
I'm Dr. Price, from New Menlo, Rhode Island, speaking on my behalf, not CEO either. I want to thank Jim. I think Jim has brought a great insight to this process, to this project that we've not had for several years. I think in your enthusiasm and your practical way of looking at the project, I think something that's been sorely needed for a long time, so thank you. And thank you to the selectmen for also, I know they're all in favor of new senior center. I'm kind of new to this process, so. I could go for a senior center on that site without a Gates building there. Unfortunately, what that does, when we had the meeting at the Performing Arts Center four months ago, five months ago, whatever it was, there was a statement made by the board of selectmen that there would not be a linkage between the senior center and what was going to happen at Gates. Now we're going to link it. And my concern is with cost, and I hear that from everybody that I come in contact with. I was in Walpole a week ago, tomorrow, their building is under construction, 14,000 square feet, $7.9 million. I would like to see the selectmen put a, we all have to work, we live on a budget, I think the town needs to live on a budget. I'd like to see us, I can consider a cap of $9 million on this project without reducing the cost of this, without reducing the size of the center to 8,000 or 9,000 square feet. But I think we can do it for $9 million. You're going to have to be somewhat innovative and, you know.
Would you accept, would you accept something less than 15,000 square feet, Gordon? What if, would you take 10,000 square feet if 9 million builds 10,000 square feet? So the reason I, the issue I have with that is, I don't want the cheapest building. I want the best building for situet. And I don't want to be capped or put a ceiling and saying, we're going to cap it at 9, because if we get to 9 million and we don't have the facility that we want, then we're going to build the facility that is already outdated. And what I'm trying to say is, yes, do I want to keep it as inexpensive as possible to taxpayers? Absolutely. But I cannot commit to a $9 million number. What I will commit to you is the best one through the architects that we take a look at. I don't want a Cadillac, I don't want a Chevy. I'd love to have a Pontiac or an Oldsmobile, but they're no longer in existence. So I'll settle for the Buick. And that's what I'm saying, that I think it's so important for people to understand that I don't want to go with the cheapest. I want what's best for the town. Because the cheapest in 2000, whatever, when they built the fire station down on First Parish, that was a cinder block building. It's not serving its purpose now. It's another issue in the long term we have to deal with. So I can't commit to that, with all due respect. But what I think is important is that we build what's going to be the best going forward. And the numbers are going to fall the way they're going to fall. And also, I will be happy to sell that, and I'll campaign for it, and I'll be happy to even go out and try to get investment for people who are willing to, private investing on.
And I want that too, John. Let's not forget, we've got to get it to a town meeting in five weeks.
Town meeting doesn't bother me as much as taking it out for a vote. That's going to be the issue.
So that in the fall may be a special gas for $9 million, $10 million. If you start asking for 12 or 13, we won't get it.
I'm not saying we're going to. I'm just saying I'm not going to limit myself, because if it's 10 million and I commit to 9 million, the naysayers out there are going to say, you've already welched on the deal, you said 9. What if it's 9.5? I've welched on the deal. That's all I'm trying to say to you is that, you know, my feeling on it is, sure, I want it as cheapest as possible for taxpayers, but that doesn't mean we may have the best for our town. And that's why I'd say, I wouldn't, and maybe my board members feel differently, but I want the best for it.
I just want to jump in to Gordon's point. Gordon, I don't think you'd want to make that statement, because we sat in with, you know, with the Public Safety Building as well as the public, the new junior high, I wish Mike was still here. What they did was they came up with their needs first. If you say square foot and cost and will make it work, I think that's backwards. I think, you know, all the studies with all your needs, then see what you can do. So, you know, I know we're getting off track.
Yeah, I have to add two things. You want to take the building that you have kind of planned out, give it to the architect and say, how much? He goes back and says, $20 million. It's okay, get rid of this, get rid of this, get rid of this. I would also add, if you're saying 12, 14 million dollars to build a senior center, that's going to be an issue. But if you're saying 12, 14 million dollars, you're checking off senior center, the Gates Gym, taking care of the Gates building, four or five different boxes that we're clearing off our plate all at the same time, it's a different conversation. And people might be more amenable to that because they see you're doing X, Y, Z as opposed to just spending all the money, all the money. But, you know, that's going to be a conversation. When you get the prices, when we get the architect to say, this is what you want to do, this is what it's going to cost, and you say, wow, okay, you know, lose that, let's do this, let's value engineer that, you get back to something that works for everybody but is within the price you're looking at.
Okay. Yes, ma'am?
Name an address.
Sure, Susannah Green. I live at 337 First Parish Road, so I literally live like right where that cuts off at the bottom. Yeah, that's us. I was just, I actually really like this proposal to have it, you know, where the building is, you know, and have more space, I guess, because we already know this thing will come down. But I guess what I'm asking is, whatever is involved that the butters, like our us and neighbors, that we, you know, kind of get, you know, that we're involved with it because it impacts our lives.
It's a public process, so it absolutely would, and you'd have every opportunity to comment all along the way. Absolutely. And I agree with you, that's one of my, you know, I agree with you, more centrally located moves it a little bit further away from the butters lines, which makes it, you know, more appealing as well.
I mean, the last plan had it like almost on top of our house, so we're like, oh, everyone's going to be like looking at it.
Yeah. I don't blame you.
If it's better on the side, I was kind of thinking, parking here with those big sodium highlights.
I mean, we've heard that.
It's better to have a building, so.
I'd say we already have a light shining in our yard, like where you live in our parking lot.
Yeah, but it does, again, I'm not an architect or a landscape architect, but it does give you some options for the site in terms of buffer space, green space for walking trails and.
Because a lot of people, a lot of people come up and we walk around, like the whole neighborhood, everybody goes up, so, yeah.
Yeah, it's not, it's not sent, so it's just.
Right.
As I was sitting, I was asking.
No, thank you for putting all that together and getting our thoughts. We know that.
Any questions?
Sure, one sec, let me just finish my thought first, please. You know, a couple of us, Tony and I met with Dr. Price, Les Ball, and Gigi Marachi last week, as well as we've met with other members in the last couple of weeks, you know, Karen has as well, John's going to be meeting with folks too. You know, we're committed to build a senior center. And we were committed, we kept it on, kept it moving, even in the absence of a town administrator. And I think you can see the value of what a town administrator adds to the process by keeping it moving and checking the boxes and cross-referencing things. So, yeah, did we have all this done in November and December? And did we socialize it as soon as we could have? No, because we needed exactly this, some guidance to actually do the day-to-day work for us. So, losing my thoughts, it's 10:30. You know, I just want to say, you know, just please know we're committed to getting this done and to doing it right. And, you know, I appreciate you, Jim, for sort of bringing it all together for us so we can, you know. My goal is to continue to put this on annual town meeting, the article, so we can move forward. I fear that if we don't, it's going to delay the process another six, seven, eight months, it's going to cost you more. You know, every time you push or you kick the can down the road, it's going to cost you more. So I just want you to consider that as well, and I hope, you know, when we come back on Tuesday, that we can give, you know, our constituents and our residents a little bit more of a clearer picture on, you know, what our goal is to do with that money that we are asking for at town meeting. And I, sure, name an address?
Yes, Harvey Gates, 48 Long Meadow Road. First, probably to the shock of all of you, I am not here because I oppose the idea of demolishing the school at all. In fact, just like Mike, I have no objections at all. That is not the issue. My question, I have a question. And the question is, what actually, the article that comes to town meeting in April for $500,000, what does that obligate us to?
It is in the capital budget, so it's in the capital article. And that is to use to hire an architect, to do design and cost assessment.
At that site?
At that site.
And what if? First, let's assume that that passes. But when it comes to the next level where it actually has to get a two-thirds vote at the town meeting and then has to go to ballot for a majority, it does not pass, the $500,000 is goodbye. Is that not correct?
Yep.
Just like the 250 happened when we designed the senior center.
On Branch Street.
Four years ago.
You spent that line.
We have a set of plans for that, though.
Where are those?
15 years ago.
My question is, and everything that you've said makes perfect sense. The one thing that you said was that perhaps if we reorganize the elementary schools, we may be building a new building.
It's possible.
This might be a good site for a new school building as well. I don't know that we have other sites.
Yeah, my answer to that was, that was looked at when they did the new middle school, and it was rejected as a site for a school. And then they looked at it for elementary school.
No, no, I think it was, no, it was rejected to build it for that school, for the middle school. But.
Yeah, they're not building any more land, that's true.
Right, and so all, it seems to me, even though I don't disagree with anything you've said, including the fact that trying to sell a $30 million town hall to the citizenry is going to be difficult if not impossible. My fear is that in two hours, you've suddenly, we've suddenly put a project ahead, and if it, and if it doesn't have follow-through, because there were lots of seniors, I'm a senior as well, but just don't.
He's so calm today.
Who would prefer other sites? And if you don't get enough support, I'm afraid that we're going to spend $500,000 and it's goodbye. I have a real fear that the 500 may pass in April, but the next leg is dead.
But that's a risk for anything. In every project that we've done.
I understand.
The library only had 1,200 people come out and vote for it.
Okay, I understand, but.
It's tough.
Going back to the survey, which I, and I spent, well, you guys did, I'm sure, as well, but the survey really did not indicate that people wanted at the Gates School. They wanted it because there was no cost associated with it. And in fact, if you just put, they were talking about converting the school into a senior center with no cost associated, it sounded like a great idea, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't fly. And to just build a new school was actually, other than the purple dinosaur, was the lowest popularity. I'm just afraid that the groups that have to come together to get a two-thirds vote and then maybe even more importantly, a majority vote on the ballot, aren't going to be there at that, at this site. That's my fear.
I think the bigger fear is people aren't going to vote no matter what site you put it on. You know, and I think that there's got to be, I think there's got to be, the seniors have got to come together and not be dispersed and have different opinions on stuff and get it done at the site that has a lot of functionality. Because any, any non-unity between the groups of seniors is causing the rest of the population to second guess whether, whether they're, that they're acting together or whether they should do it at all.
This site has the most potential for doing whatever you want to do, for building the senior center and doing something else. Hey, we've got a bunch of seniors like Bocchi, there's nobody to put a Bocchi for. You can do a lot of things there. Because of the size of the site and the way it's laid out, there's plenty of space to expand, want to change, want to put in new things. Some of these other sites, not as much space, you're talking about building a parking lot with green space on the edge of it. And each one of those sites has an opportunity, gosh, you put the senior center there, well, maybe they could have put the town hall there, or.
I hope that you're, I hope that you're right. I'm not, in the circles that I travel, I'm not hearing any support for this site. Now, in fairness, they've not heard that a school's going to get torn down, and that may change. That then, to me, that makes it much more desirable than it was before I heard this. But.
Yeah, you're tucking it here, you're tucking it back here, and you still have.
We still have the problem.
That.
It's the white elephant.
Correct. And that's why I couldn't understand why the selectmen were going forward with it until I, I've heard the second, the second part to it, which is, it's going to replace the school.
If you're going to renovate this, and you're going to take off this or whatever, if you're going to renovate this, the town common, the town center concept, this is a great concept for having everything in here so that, you know, again, seniors, college, you want to go to the senior center, you're in here, you can pay your taxes, you're in here, you want to go play pickleball, you can go all the way through in here. You can access this whole complex and do almost everything you need to do in dealing with the town in one location. It's a fantastic concept. It's just, you know, I shouldn't say it, that's a criticism, that's because it's just a very expensive thing.
No, I'm good right now.
Harvey, I think that this is part of the process that is exactly those elements. When we made that choice, it was for the elements regardless of what happened to Gates, that that's what appealed, at least to me, and I think that's what the board, that's why we liked that site. The next step is, okay, let's flesh it out, which is why we're asking for the design fees. Jim came on board, crunched the numbers, and it became abundantly clear that, okay, maybe there's a different option that wasn't reviewed in the survey, because at that time that wasn't something that was on the board. So it is a very, it's a, it's a step-by-step process. I think this information we can all chew on and talk about next week, but it's a next step in that process of really fleshing it out so that when we come in April, we can say with confidence to people, hey, we've, we have thought all these things through. This is good for the town, this is good, it accomplishes the senior center. And not for nothing, I just want to point out, unless we'll back me up on this, when we found the problems at the library, you know, we had a budget and it was, we weren't coming back for one more dime on that, and we managed to value engineer $800,000 out of that budget in order to meet our, and we delivered everything we expected, everyone expected. And I can say with pretty much confidence that this board is very mindful that we don't want to put one more penny out on a bond that we don't have to. So the Public Building Commission has done a really good job. They've got three new buildings under their belt, so.
This is the very first proposal to the town to tear down a building, and I have no idea how, I.
Second.
Second, that one. We're taking it from the place.
And that was, and that was a couple hundred thousand, so, you know.
I can tell you, we bought a school in Dole, we were still paying for the roof block. We don't have that, we own a potty, my office, we paid off the block six years later, so. It happens, but.
No, no, I, that's fine. I just, it seems to, it seemed as though this discussion should have been last fall, but of course, you weren't here last fall.
Well, in a little fairness.
It was very late in the year.
We've been talking about this for years. We've been talking about tearing down the school.
Oh, yeah, we have.
No.
Yeah, look at the minutes.
Jerky Mau.
It was one of the options that the.
2014, it was an option.
Maybe it was an aspect on three years ago.
One of the options that the building you renewed said, tear it down.
Right, they didn't recommend that at the time. Right, they didn't recommend that at the time.
Was it in the Jerky Mau report from Rhode Island?
No, but you've got to understand, we're trying to make these issues that the town has been having for the past 35 years, Harvey, you know it, Gordon, you know it, and we don't have a lot of money to spend. We have spent in the past eight years, $140 million, $140 million to deal with issues that the town has, for whatever reason, decided not to do for almost 30 years, and now we're trying to catch up. And we're trying to spend your taxpayer dollars as efficiently and as judiciously as possible. And until everybody in this room trusts in us together and compromise and say, I'm doing it for the benefit of a town so we can get a senior center, a heritage center, a cultural center, whatever you want to call it, we're not going to succeed. And if you want to kick this can further down the road and say, forget about the 500,000 for an architect, fine, you're going to wait another year, you're going to go out and get more people who are going to say, what are you going to do with Gates? I'm not going to vote another thing until I know what's going to happen to Gates. You're going to have the people who are going to vote against it anyways, and they're going to use every aspect of anything we do or we don't do, whatever we decide, and mistrust us. And some of you don't even think we're being honest, you think anything we do is tainted, and that's unfortunate, because guess what? Either we're going to work together and get a senior center, and I'm not looking at you, Harvey, because you've been very good, and we've talked a lot, and Gordon, you have too. But I will say, we have been trying to figure this issue out, and we're trying to work to get it done. And until all of us here say, let's get it done and work and figure out, then you can distrust us and you can say, that's, you know, what, I mean, we're trying to do this and look at it, $30 million, it doesn't make sense anymore. But it did in 2014 if we were able to do it and save money. It doesn't make sense, I get it. But I sit here and I feel like every time I talk to people about it, they're like, oh yeah, you're just selling something. No, we're not. So, I'm sitting here going, it makes sense. I don't want to tear it down, I like the old look of it, but it's not functional for the town to do something in there. And it's going to be a cost of $65,000, it's going to go up with the insurance because it's unused to some degree, I guess, with insurance. But at the end of the day, you have to ask yourself, who's going to go in there? And I'm like.
It's not true.
I'm like, I think it's not a historical building. It's an old school that Harvey, you probably went through, or maybe you didn't, and I have to say, I would be really sad to see my high school torn down. I mean, I think it'd be very sad to see this building, because there's a lot of memories, a lot of fun memories, and I just hate to see it go, but I don't know how we can keep it with all the money that we're trying to catch up and fix these things. Because it's news to me, it's not news to me, because I know the schools have issues. And soon as we opened up the middle school, you know, for your brother in naming it, people were saying, look at our high school. They're going from this middle school into this dump? I heard people say that. And I'm sitting here going, that's going to come down the pike. And I'm like, so, this is the moment, and I'm like, either we get together and we're saying, we're going to do this, but if you kick it down the road, there are other people who are going to come to the table and say, these issues are here. And I'm like, I mean, I wanted the Driftway. I'm the first person who raised it, I went to the Council on Aging, and I said, that's the place we could maybe do a land swap, four or five years ago. And it didn't happen, I get it. So, I compromised, I changed my vote. Why? Because I want unanimity, I want us to be together on this. I like the Driftway, that was my vote. But at this point, I'm compromising because I want to get it done. And unless we do that together, we're going to fail. If we can't agree now, you're not going to win the town meeting. If we don't win the town meeting, my feeling on it is, we're not ready for it. That's my fear.
Okay, thank you, John. I want to take one more question.
You saw the globe art, and everybody wants to look at it, the senior centers. And I look at this, and it's everything that that story talks about, for more active seniors, for, you know, everything that that story talked about is on this location. You know, I'm not a rocket scientist, if I was, I'd be coaching the first.
Can you say?
But sometimes it's just, you know, I haven't been here, so it's just.
I'll ask him.
You know, it's not something to consider, and I think the board, I think it's a great place to put the senior center, especially the latter of that globe art, and to talk about what, yes, seniors, but what you're looking for. You're looking for more than just a building where you go and play cops. You want everything else on the site, it's all here, it's a great place to put it if we can do it correctly.
All right, I'll take one more question, and then we're going to go, because it's 10:50.
Pass my best.
I have a quick comment.
Sure.
Oh, question. The 500K, the study, the architect, does that include tear down or not tear down the gates?
That's what we're going to.
Or just the senior center?
But if you listen to me at the beginning, we're actually going to increase that, because all the $500,000 we give us would be a conceptual design and estimates.
Okay.
We're going to increase that to, I think, about $950,000.
We're going to discuss it on Tuesday.
Right. Which would then give us actual construction documents, and we could go to bid with that if we wanted to before going to the town meeting, and actually have a hard bid cost in our hands, so here's what it's going to cost.
All right, so the second question I have is, you know, several of us have visited different senior centers. So, it's possible to piggyback on other senior centers that we like, so we don't have to spend all that money?
So, I asked a friend of mine who's an architect, and what she explained to me is that many of those plans are copyrighted, so not typically you can, but you certainly can take those ideas and maybe try to shorten the process a little bit, but it's a different site, different issues, but if there's a design out there that you like, absolutely, you know, we'll point them in that direction as a model, if you will, and if we can, great. Hey, we're, we will leverage anything that we can.
So, I talked to the person at the Marshall, and he said he doesn't see why not, you know, to give us a blueprint and stuff, but he.
Is he the architect?
They don't give them a.
He's not an architect.
Okay, there you go. You have to have a conversation with the guy that drew the plans.
But it is, it is staggering, that's what we talked about. I mean, how can we spend a million dollars to get a picture of a building? Right, it's crazy.
But it's not just the pictures, it's the construction plans, it's the site plans, it's a lot more that's.
The construction documents.
Still, it's a million dollars.
It is a lot more.
It's not just the architect, it's the architect, it says mechanical subcontracting, it's a site subcontracting, it's an engineering subcontract, so it's everybody underneath that to put everything together that goes into a book that says, this is how you build it, tell me how much you want it to cost. And add the fact that we have public bid laws, which adds about 30% to the cost of project by the gates.
One thing we haven't mentioned, and I know I want to wrap up, is just to remind people about the Senator O'Connor's application for, can you?
Yeah, so Senator O'Connor, the Commonwealth did a Division of Capital Asset Management Bond Bill for building projects. Senator O'Connor was able to get a $2 million authorization in that bond bill for the senior center, which is fantastic. Now, we just need the governor to say, yes, I'm going to issue that bond and give you the $2 million, but it's the first step, so it's a potential that if we can get this all the way through, that we can take $2 million off the cost. He wrote it so well that we can basically use the friendly one around the senior center, sign construction, whatever we want, it's wide open. So, that's fantastic. Trudy Campbell had a hand in that, Joe Machino had a hand in that.
So, if you feel compelled to write to the senators to encourage their support, I'm sure that would help them in the cause.
Also, actually, I have to write to the governor, so we need to write to the governor.
Oh, yeah, write to the governor.
All right, thank you, Jim, thank you for your comments, we appreciate them, thank you for staying here. I know it's late. Nope, it's now.
Make it quick.
I like to have the kids' mothers.
So, I know, well. Mark can still get it done in five minutes.
Joe used to say.
Five minutes.
There is.
Yeah, but we can vote to go do it on.
I mean, the council school track.
And a list of warrant articles.
My kiddo.
I'm going to have it.
We'll have to bring a bio tag. Okay. The difference, your wife will be.
No, you're not the one who wants me.
My dog loves me.
Yeah, it's my dog.
Thank you, okay, we've got some business to keep doing, thank you very much.
Sorry.
You can stay, just, you can stay, we'd love to have you stay, we just can't have a conversation.
Big light shining right in the room.
Yeah.
It'd be like that Slimefield episode.
Just so we act nice, keep going.
All right, so we are reviewing the list of tentative warrant articles for special town meetings.
Because one of the sites, they can, like, seven, nine.
I don't think there's anything different in there, Jim wants to walk through them.
I just wanted to read the.
You can keep the co-op on the side, a lot of people.
I don't want to keep the facade, but.
At least, you know, design.
Sorry.
Nope, that's okay, I understand, thank you.
My, the annual or the special?
Annual.
Annual town meeting.
Really, it's mostly stock articles that you see every year, your enterprise funds, I, so I prefer, I don't have to go through them one by one.
No.
Evolving funds, community preservation, we don't have those actually in yet, do we? So, the community preservation, we have to put that in, as to what that is going to look like, the reconciliation. Your two, your two zoning, your two marijuana bylaws, one the zoning bylaw, one the general bylaw to prohibit the sale of recreational marijuana in town, the planning board is meeting Thursday night, I think.
Can we do that one already? Didn't we do one to smoking?
No, you have, you have a moratorium, the moratorium expires in November, so you have to, the town councils are calling it a Belt and Senders approach, you have to do a zoning article and a general bylaw article in order to be perfectly protected if you want to ban the recreational use of marijuana, of sale of marijuana. One town had the general article passed, the zoning article failed, kind of a question, is it banned, is it not banned, but you need to get both of them passed. Hopefully, they pass, if for some reason they don't, we have time to do the fall town meeting to then do the regulations in the zone.
So, this is just a sale, this isn't use, we did the use.
The use you've already done, you prohibit the use in public spaces.
It's now just the sale.
Sale of recreational marijuana, all the growing facilities and all that stuff.
Okay.
I think Article 18, I do have an article back on there on the tact factory land, which would be the land that we need to put in conservation for the Ellis property.
Right, did they get a determination yet?
Council has it all, so I'm hoping to get a determination back from the state that it's suitable and that's going to be a good piece of property.
So, we can do that, okay.
If not, I want to know before the warrant goes to print, because I'll pull it off if it's not going to be.
Okay.
Suitable.
That's one of the questions I had on here.
And then there's two petition articles, one is to establish an Ellis Property Study Commission consisting of seven members to make recommendations as to, let me just get it, the charge of the commission shall be to review the status of the so-called Ellis property, the uses of such property, to examine the legal status of such uses and to make recommendations to town meeting regarding what steps, if any, are required to make such uses conform with, one, the law, and, two, the donative intent of the Ellis family. So, that's one commission, that's one petition article. And the second is to have the town appropriate $10,000 to the South Shore Community Action Council, Inc., for services provided to low-income and elderly residents in the town of Situate.
And when are we inviting, are they coming before us, before?
They usually do, don't they?
Yeah, when are they coming before us? Do we have them on the schedule?
We haven't scheduled it yet, but we will.
Okay, okay, just so we make sure that we give them, give them notice. Okay, all right, any questions for Jim on that?
Uh-uh.
All right, we're going to table the review of the liquor license policy tonight, just to give folks an opportunity to read it. We've got it due to the storm, we, you know, had some delay in the packets, so we haven't really all had an opportunity to take a deep dive into it, as well as it's late, so we'll just table it for.
Yeah, it just says you reviewed it, Chief Stewart has reviewed it, made recommended changes that we put in, and Emery Galvin has been through it, she's made some recommendations. I met with her, some of them made it in, some didn't, some we've kind of changed a lot, but this represents, you know, the culmination of the three of us going through the document and.
Whose based document is it?
I did this in Norwell, and I took it to Linfield, and then I brought it back down here, and it's kind of tailored to each community. We probably made the most changes down here, based upon Emery's and Chief Stewart's recommendations, but it's been in use in Norwell for 15, 20 years anyways.
Okay.
Also, Tony, is just a restating of what's in the statute.
Yeah, I read some of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we have to look at all the penalties. Okay, so we'll take a look at that, put that on the next available agenda.
Again, I know you don't want to talk about, but even the penalties, this is a policy, so it's a guideline, they're not something that you have to do when someone comes in and say, but the policy says, it's just a guideline.
Okay.
It's a tool for the licensing authority to help manage their legal establishments.
Okay, thank you. And then do you want to talk to us a little bit about the opioid litigation suit? I mean, I think we just got this as well today, so I don't.
Okay, so I'll talk very briefly about it, you got it late. There is a mass tort, John, corrected from wrong, it's not a class action, it's a mass tort.
Sorry.
Where law firms, including KMP, which is Copman and Page, which is one of the largest municipal law firms in the Commonwealth, are taking litigation against the opioid manufacturers for, lack of a better way of putting it, the damage that it's been caused by the opioid addiction. I signed on in Norwell to a similar suit for additives in gasoline that were getting in the water supply. At no cost to the town, I think we ended up with over $100,000 that went back to the water department because of additives in gasoline that were getting into the water supply. I don't see a risk with this at all. Rockland has signed on, Norwell signed on a week or two ago. It is to try to reimburse communities for the costs that they have incurred due to the opioid, opioid addiction crisis. But only the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee have the right to authorize councils, so I couldn't just sign on by myself. I met with them, you know, I think it's a good idea, I'll, town council has some reservations about it, but, you know, I think it's, it doesn't cost us any money to participate, and if we recover, we recover, but I think it sends a message from Situate, which has been one of the leaders in the anti-opioid drive, that, hey, we're serious about this, and we want to remain on the cutting edge and the leading edge of trying to fight this addiction.
Yeah, what was council's objection?
Just kind of general, you know, we just don't really kind of like that type of litigation.
I don't even think she's read the one that you're proposing.
I told her, I said, put it down, write it down for me, and I'll share with the board, and I never got anything back, so.
Okay. All right. Yeah, she emailed me and asked me what policy we were looking at, and I said, I don't have it yet, so if we can get her a copy.
Liquor policy, I thought I sent it to her.
I don't know, she, she emailed me this morning, and I said, I don't have it yet, so I can't even get it for you. So, she was going to reach out to the show.
Yes.
The opioid is not a policy, the opioid would be for the Board of Selectmen to authorize the town administrator to execute an agreement to dispend the litigation.
Right.
So, we'd like her to document why we shouldn't.
Karen's question.
Yeah, so she didn't get back to me, that's like. But again, I did, I did a similar thing in Norwell, it worked out, worked out pretty well. I can't tell you what the attorneys made, probably more than I did, but the town did recover something on that.
I remember.
Okay. So, we'll read this, you want to read this, you want us to authorize you at the next meeting? When do you need to be authorized by?
Sort of a little better, but it's not going to, they're not going to stand without me.
I mean, I haven't read it, so I don't, I think the board would want to read it.
Do it the next meeting, let's take a look at it. I'm curious, because I will say, I've been curious about some kind of like concerted effort to sue pharmaceutical companies. I'm just curious to know who these players are, ICKP law, but the rest of them, I don't recognize, just give me, to the next meeting.
Sweeney Amerigan is the, really the leader, they're the ones that I met with out of Boston, they came down, one of their principals is out of Hingham, so he came by and talked to me about it.
Okay. I'm just going to, do we need to, Sean and Tony both brought up something about 11:00 PM, do we need to make some sort of determination or vote to go beyond 11:00 PM?
We used, yeah, we always had a lever car lock rule.
I don't think it's a bylaw, I think that was just, I think Joe would have to do that.
We don't have that much more, are we okay?
Yeah, let's just, yeah, that's fine.
Just wanted to put that out there, so everybody knows. Okay, so the next thing we are at is discussion and vote for one day.
Will the Board of Selectmen approve one day wine and malt license to Silent Chef on June 10, 2018, from 12:30 PM till 4:00 PM for a bridal shower at the Situate Maritime Center?
Motion by Mr. Dennehy, seconded by Mr. Vignani, all in favor?
Aye.
I further move the Board of Selectmen to approve one day wine and malt license to St. Mary's of the Nativity Parish Center on March 24, 2018, from 7:00 till 9:30 PM for the Coral Arts Society of the South Shore.
Motion by Mr. Dennehy, seconded by Mr. Vignani, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so the next item on the agenda is to vote for an appointment to the zoning board.